... board meeting for September 2019. Could you please join me for the pledge? Thank you. Got a lot of agenda items tonight, so I appreciate your patience in advance. Just one note, if you're here for Fox Run, Haifa, Raymond Avenue School, or Stewart's Gas Station, they are going to be adjourned to a later meeting.
Although Fox Run, we will open the floor for comments.
But we will, yes, we will open Fox Run for comments. All right. First up on the agenda is Faith Assembly of God subdivision, a public hearing and secret review, and preliminary subdivision review, and final subdivision review for a major two-lot subdivision resulting in the creation of three lots at 254 Spackenkill Road, Zone R20 residence, single-family. It's an unlisted action, Faith Assembly of God Church is the owner. Welcome back.
Thank you.
You've done some changes, so briefly describe what you've done since last time.
Well, it's been a couple of months, but we made, I know we received comments back earlier this week or end of last week that will have to be changed or addressed and submitted. But we addressed all previous comments as stated in the transmittal letter with the updated copy of the plans. We have received Health Department approval on both lots since last time.
Okay, great.
So that's always a nice hurdle to get over. And I have read all the comments that have delivered to me. Most of them came from either Andy Lern or from Carl, but they all seem kind of easy to address. Some details, some do with meets and bounds, and a couple are issues there. The one outstanding issue that I think the owner of Faith Assembly of God would still like to discuss with you would be the $5,000 per lot recreation fee. But otherwise, we have nothing else new to offer. We do have a member of the Board of the Church, Terrence Manuel, that would just like to may have that discussion, you know, give a minute here tonight. You could hear him out. But otherwise, there's nothing new to state with this project.
Okay. All right. Go ahead.
I'm just sending it for Kristen tonight, so.
So I think you've all had a chance to read Kristen's review. Essentially, we're recommending that the board open the public hearing, close it if that's warranted. We do have this lined up for seeker neg deck and a resolution of conditional approval. We acknowledge that there's this discussion to be had about the rec fee, although, you know, we've put in a finding here that the, that there isn't land suitable for recreation land on the site, and therefore, the rec fee would be typically warranted. And that's about it. Most of the issues are minor at this point. There are things that just need to be cleaned up on the plat, but they're nothing that can't be resolved once we have conditional approval.
Yep. It's great you got the Board of Health already on board, so, and to address some of the issues. Can you go to Don for any, if it's on this hill, the engine, any more SWIP return?
No, nothing significant.
Okay, great. At this time, I moved we open the public hearing for this project.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. Is there anyone in the audience which should comment on this project? Marta?
Hello again. My name is Marta Knapp, no relation in the local Knapps, as I told you before. Anyway, I came here to talk about the crazy plan Vassar College has, but when I realized that you're talking about smart meters and cellphone technology, this is a major public health concern.
This is just a subdivision of two lots.
Subdivision of two lots, but what I just read is going to include a stealth phone, I mean stealth cellphone tower like you've got right out here.
That's a different application.
Oh, it's not what it says here in tonight's agenda?
It is.
It'll be, but that's number three, coupled down, so.
Oh, so I can't do it yet.
Come back when, yeah, when we're ready for that.
Okay, sorry.
Yep, sorry for the confusion. Same church is on for two different sites. Oh, that's right, it is. All right. Is there anyone else which to comment on this particular application? Seeing none, I move we close the public hearing for this.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. Let's go around the board for comments. Start with Bob tonight.
I don't have any significant things. I think he covered my cover all in his summary there, so that was.
Right. Nicole?
Yeah, I don't really have anything. I think you'll just have to figure out what you want to do as far as the land or payment is concerned.
All right. Peter?
Just want to get straight for the record with the town engineer, and that is because of the steep slopes here, removal of a lot of vegetation, the construction of a four-bedroom house and a three-bedroom house, all that draining into a flood zone and ultimately into a federal wetland. You've looked at the SWIP, you have examined the mitigation, and you feel comfortable that this is a good plan moving forward.
Yes, sir.
Okay. The second thing is I'd asked you about the site distance for those lots because of the sharp curve there. Are we okay with the site distance for those driveways?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Peter. Driven by there myself, and it looks like you see both ways around the curve. Ben?
No, nothing.
Great. Thanks. So I guess the only issue remaining is the rec fee discussion. We should have that briefly, but I think the town is in a position that the code is pretty straightforward, that you have to either donate the land for recreation or pay the fee in lieu of. So we'll, if you want to have a little bit more discussion.
I fully understand. If they could just make a statement to you, then if that's still your guys standing, then that's fine, and we'll move forward.
But we're, we want to hear the statement.
Good evening. My name is Terrence Micas, and I'm representing Faith Assembly. The CFO, Alex Severin, couldn't be here. I'm the church administrator. The letter is pretty straightforward. It's a simple request, just with limited budget and certain laws coming down from Albany in terms of health issues and things which affects the student population and the relationship we have with the town police over the last five or six years. We just asked you to consider it, and that's really all I have to say.
Great. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Haven't seen you on TV in a while.
Yeah, left there a long time.
Thanks for your comments. You have any comments on the rec fees, Lisa?
No, not really. I mean, it's, it is the board's discretion, but typically, when there's residential lots that are being created that will bring people and children to the town, the town has historically required a rec fee every time there is a subdivision. I don't, I can't think of any example where the town didn't require a rec fee, and it would set a dangerous precedent, not dangerous, but because if you're using either a quid pro quo for what services have been given to the, to the town, or if you're basing it on it being a charitable organization, then anytime someone came down the pike later who had done one of or both of those things, they would be seeking the same. And I think in the end, it would be detrimental to the town's parking, parkland requirements.
Okay, thank you. And I know personally, I mean, you mentioned the fire use of the facility, but you know, many other organizations have also allowed the fire department to use their facilities, so it's.
Well, I expected a much more detailed explanation from them, the way I was explained, but.
That's, I think, where we're at.
That's, that's, that's okay.
So that, let's see, I think everybody's been around. Any further comments? Go ahead.
I move that the planning board determine that the proposed Faith Assembly of God subdivision 254 Spackenkill Road application would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the seeker negative declaration for an unlisted action dated September 19, 2019.
Here, second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero.
I move that the planning board determine per Town Code 210-93I3 that the proposed residential development presents a proper case for requiring a park or parks suitably located for playgrounds or other recreational purposes, but that a suitable park or parks of adequate size cannot be properly located as part of the Faith Assembly of God subdivision 254 Spackenkill Road application, and therefore, a fee in lieu of recreation land shall be required as required by Town Code 105-4S5.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional preliminary and final major subdivision approval subject to the following conditions. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said response to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness, inclusive of, but not limited to, the following, one through four.
Second. Moved and seconded, grant conditional. Called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. So you're off and running.
Thank you.
Next application is Camelot Village Mobile Home Park, public hearing and seeker review for, and coastal consistency review, and amended site plan review for proposal to combine an existing mobile home park with an adjoining one-acre parcel and develop it for storage facility buildings for use of the mobile home park residence. It's Camelot Village NY LLC is the owner. Welcome back.
Good evening. Bill Povell, engineer for the applicant. Following the last meeting, we went back and addressed a significant amount of comments that we received from all the reviewing agencies and this board. In general, the plan has not changed, still very consistent with the previous plan. We just enhanced the plan as far as providing additional details, curbing, and additional grading. We addressed a lot of SWIP comments, those types of things.
Okay. Thanks, Bill. So was Kristen's?
Yeah, just, you know, you had the staff report from Kristen. It's, we haven't seen this since April, but most of the comments would have been addressed at this point, so, you know, we think we're ready for the neg deck, and there is a draft neg deck in your packet. Actually, there was an updated version of it that was in your addendums tonight. And in terms of coastal consistency review, it certainly, we think, would not have any negative impact, so we're ready to go forward with conditional.
All right, thanks. Any engineering last minute?
Most, most of our issues are done, are pretty well done as well, with just some cleanup things.
Yep, all right, great. This is on for public hearing, so I move we open the public.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. Is there anyone in the audience which to comment on this application? Seeing none, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. Let's go around the board for comments on this. Start with Ben this time. Pull your mic down, Ben.
No, I don't have anything.
All right, thanks. Peter?
Just one question. Sorry, just one question about the, there's a site distance easement here at the intersection of Sheaf Road. What exactly, can you describe what that easement entails?
There's, there's an easement across the front because of the curvature in the road, and that easement will restrict any, the owner to place any items that would impede any, the site distance in that area, including bushes, you know, planting, those types of things.
Okay, so does it also entail any responsibility on his part or the owner's part for clear, keeping it clear?
Yes.
And that's, we have that in writing?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Nicole?
The new access drive, is there going to be a name to that, or?
There is going to be a name to that, but we haven't selected one yet.
We haven't figured it out yet.
Right. But that would be submitted to the town as well as 911, and we would go through all the, you know, proper channels.
Okay.
Not Povell Drive?
No.
All right, that's it.
Actually, that's one of the hardest.
It is hard.
It's one of the hardest items when you're doing a project, is nobody can come up with a road name. That and naming the project.
All right. Bob?
Nothing from me.
My comment was, you know, it was looking good out there. Current fence is like a chain link fence to the neighbor, to the, to the south there. Now, it looks like you're proposing a fence. Could you describe what that fence?
That would be a stockade fence.
So you're doing, so it will be opaque and?
Yep.
About six feet high?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that should help shield the neighbor. We haven't, haven't heard any complaints from them, so. And just reminded that I think it's, can't cut any days until November 1st, is it? I think we're, yes, it's on 2/31st. In case you get the plan signed quickly, you gotta be careful when you cut.
November 1st.
Right. All right, we're ready.
I move that the planning board hereby determine that Camelot Village Mobile Home Park amended site plan would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the seeker negative declaration for an unlisted action dated September 19, 2019.
Second.
Moved and seconded for seeker, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero.
I move that the planning board determine that the Camelot Village Mobile Home Park amended site plan is consistent with the town of Poughkeepsie's approved local waterfront revitalization program.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for Camelot Village Mobile Home Park amended site plan subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said response to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness, inclusive of, but not limited to, the following, one through seven.
Second.
Moved and seconded, grant conditional, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. Are you prepared to do any architectural review of the?
We did submit conceptual drawings, just to get some initial feedback from the board, where we will be coming back with, with the sample, you know, the samples.
Okay. Yep. Let's take a quick look at the, so are these, these are two colors, it's a greenish.
It's a greenish gray, which is a stock color, but it hasn't been finalized just yet on the manufacturer. So I wanted to just get some feedback from the board tonight, and then we would come back, you know, with the actual, with the finalized design. And what we're looking to do is match the existing garage where we, we're going to add the addition to it. So we would re-side that with a similar color.
And that was just painted, painted block, I think?
Correct.
It's a discussion for architecture. Anyone have any comments? Or should we move forward with?
I think it looks good.
Yep, and green, green's good, fits into the landscape. So I don't think you'll, you'll have any objections the next time you come back with the samples.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Good luck.
Thanks. Have a good night.
You too.
Next application is T-Mobile at Faith Assembly of God, 25 Golf Lane, public hearing, secret review, and site plan review for proposal to add three new panel antennas with a stealth canister to visually match its existing installation. And the addition of one new line of hybrid cable and three RRUs are required. Faith Assembly of Church is the owner, and type two action. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Skolnick. I work with NBNC Consulting on behalf of T-Mobile. We are helping T-Mobile expand their network across top state New York. Tonight, we're here to, T-Mobile's proposing the addition of three new antennas on an existing rooftop installation on top of the church. There are three antennas there currently with a couple cabinets and some equipment on a platform. T-Mobile's, the new antennas are proposed to be in a stealth canister, just like the three that are there now. It'll be mounted on a tripod at the other end of the platform. T-Mobile's currently under a lease, an ongoing lease with the landowner. That lease required a notice to them, and we have received a notice to proceed as per the terms of the lease, so we, the authorization letter is in your packet. The design was put together by engineers. We have a structural and amount analysis that was also included in your package that shows the passing calculations. There really isn't much change to what's there, other than the new canister and the three new antennas. The height is approximately 52 feet centerline of those antennas from ground level, so it's quite a distance up, about 13 feet to the top of that canister from the roof surface.
Is it the same height as the old, existing canister?
Correct. And the radio units and the cable that you mentioned are just needed to go from the existing cabinets, the equipment on the platform, to the new antennas. So there's nothing affecting the ground or anything new around the church. So what we're looking for is a negative deck tonight and a site plan approval. I can certainly try and answer any questions you may have. I know we received some comments from the town that were pretty basic, which we've addressed in a handout that I can give you tonight. They were from the town engineer, for the most part, with just a North Arrow and some abutting, the listing of the abutting property owners to the property. So I have that here if you'd like. I also have the affidavit for the posting in the paper, which I was told to bring. That goes over there.
That would just complement the design package that you already have. It's just a map of the, the area, area map of the building and the abutting property owners. Those are all the comments we received from the town earlier this week. The only other thing to mention, from a safety perspective, T-Mobile does operate under all regulations the FCC has for emissions. T-Mobile does do an internal emissions analysis for every site. This one had no, no issues for the new antennas. It's within compliance. The signage is already there, and it's 52 feet above the ground. There are no microwaves at the site, so the antenna, the emissions are relatively low. I think that pretty much covers it all, so if there's any questions.
I guess, I mean, before we get into some, some public hearings, before we get into that, I wanted to confirm, is it still fourth generation antennas, or are you moving towards?
This equipment is for capacity right now. Those three antennas are at full capacity. However, these new antennas are new technology, which will allow 4G and ultimately the upgrade to 5G.
Okay. So instead of being added just for capacity issue, those are?
Yes.
Current antennas are overtaxed?
You, yes, yeah, there's only three there. Typically, a macro installation for T-Mobile would have 12 antennas.
All right. Let's, for Mike, this is a first.
So this is the type two action under seeker, so there's no further review that needs to occur. On the environmental side, we do typically look here at primarily visual issues, and, you know, I think the location for it is, it's not highly visible. It does have the stealth canister, so, you know, generally, we're okay with the proposal as it is. There's some minor things that needed to get cleaned up. We did have a question about lighting. Does no lighting shown on the plan?
Yes, lighting, the other comment from planning, there's just an existing light for maintenance when someone's servicing the cabinets, and there's no change to that. No new lighting is proposed.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You mentioned microwaves before. Oh, sorry. Is this, would you describe this as a microwave transmission facility?
No, no, there are no microwaves. The microwave is typically used for the fiber, the AAV backhaul, fiber optic connections. This site is getting the fiber through the building, so no microwave is on site.
Okay, because that was one of the, that's the requirement in order for it to be a type two. It can't be a microwave facility.
Okay, Lisa. Your standard cellphone antenna, then? All right. I don't suppose there's any engineering issues. Do you have a, there's no generator proposed or backup batteries?
Nope, nope, whatever is already there now.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, this is a public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. And we have two people signed up, and Marta was number one. Come on up.
I like the sound of that. Anyway, I don't understand how this could have no microwaves, because anything that's called a cellphone antenna is giving off microwave, so I don't understand that at all. And, you know, I want to say the word stealth is no accident either, because stealth implies it's sneaky, nobody knows. And microwaves are what are coming off of any cellphone facility, any cellphone tower, any smart meter. And on top of that, you actually admit that it's for 5G, which is an extremely high level of microwaves per square inch, or RFR, is radiation frequent, radio frequency radiation. So I, I think that you are not being honest or truthful, Mr. Representative. And I would like to say, because I still have the floor, that radio frequency radiation that we are being bombarded with, in fact, at this very moment, by the stealth cellphone tower outside this town facility, are bombarding us and disrupting the DNA in every cell in our bodies, leading to Parkinson ALS, also known as Lou Gehrig's disease, MS, dementia, Alzheimer's, cancer, and stroke, and heart attack, just to name a few of the serious health consequences of exposure. A documentary film called Take Back Your Power: Investigating the Smart Grid should be required viewing for all municipalities before making misinformed decisions. I understand that these new devices, we can't touch, we can't feel, we can't smell the microwaves, and yet, they are going and slicing right through our bodies at this very moment, sir. And recently, a $25 million study called the National Toxicology Program Study concluded that 2G radiation frequency radiation, or microwaves, causes cancer and heart problems. We're currently being bombarded with 3G, 4G, and now 5G, which I know is in Poughkeepsie as well as in Newburgh and a small part of Kingston. And this will only make us all sicker and quicker. Why? So we can have faster connectivity in cyberspace. 2.4 gigahertz RFRs causes diabetes in lab rats. What's it doing to us? And headaches, tiredness, ear pressure, earaches, tachycardia, the shakes, anxiety, depression, confusion. Are any of you noticing these symptoms increasing in your own body? Or how about brain tumors, which used to be rare, and now, most people use cellphones at their own risk of getting a brain tumor? As more and more people learn about the escalating danger of RFRs, who will be liable for ill health? The taxpayers? The tax-free utilities like Verizon? Corporations have all the rights of an individual, but none of the responsibilities? Or do they look at recent suits against Purdue Pharma, Johnson &amp; Johnson, the Sackler family, and all the other players in the opioid overdose crisis in this country? Or maybe we should talk about Monsanto having to pay out now for giving people cancer with the pesticide known as Roundup? Billions of dollars made in profit at the expense of public health, which our government is supposed to- is supposed to protect us. And what is privacy worth? The telecommunications corporations are stealing that as well, and the resulting rise in the rates paid for water, electricity and gas are not coincidental to the two-way communication between cellphone towers and the meters. Watch out. And I, I have to really say, I'm just dumbfounded that when you're asked directly if this is a microwave-producing facility, you said, "No, it goes into the building." I don't really get that, and I sure as heck, I'm never going to the Faith Assembly of God unless I'm in a hurry to get to the other side. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Marta. I mean, the frequency is, is this a 2.1 gig?
There are several frequencies on this site, they're all under FCC regulations and T-Mobile's licenses from the FCC.
All right, let's, next person. Next up is Michelle Lieber. And also ask you to keep your comments to three minutes as well.
Three minutes? Okay, and I'd like permission, if I may, to distribute the copies that I gave to you so that each person has the ability to look at the information I'm providing.
Yeah, I know you handed some of that out already, so.
Thank you. First of all, you know, we don't, we know that there are levels right in here in this room, 1.34 volts per meter. I measured it with an acoustometer, and you can take a look at it after if you'd like. 1.32 volts per meter and 531 millivolts per meter squared are in this building now. The milliliters per squared are coming from outside the exterior of this building, from the stealth pole over there. What 1.32 volts per meter does is it brings on cancer, brain tumor risk by 121% higher. So if you're here at any length of time, because it's accumulative, that's what you're exposing yourself to, only at 1.32 volts per meter, here in this room, mostly dispersed to the back of this room and here, but where you guys are, it's about .30 volts per meter, basically safe. Okay, so in any case, I'm going to be passing over to you guys, the RF levels measured around the community here, right here, the IAFF Statement on RF Radio Frequency, which is the International Association of Firefighters, who in Los Angeles won a moratorium against a particular code in Los Angeles that would have placed all these facilities on top of their fire stations. And they've been fighting it for 20 years because they understand what the health effects have been over the years, and they got themselves a decision. So there are no cellphone towers on top of facilities, but yet we're going to put one on the, whatever, the Christ of God or whatever, we're going to put it on top of that building. That particular pole right there is emanating into this space, right here where we're sitting, where some of you guys work. So anyway, I understand this board cannot be, cannot act based on health effects, and therefore I cannot speak to the World Health Organization and the International Agency for Rescue, I'm sorry, for Research and Cancer, that states that RF microwave radiation is a Class IIb carcinogen like asbestos, and that it is considering raising its category as a Class Ia carcinogen, causing an increased risk in glioma, okay? And Marta already spoke to the National Toxicology Program Report that just came out. That does say that the very same not thermal, non-thermal effects, sorry, that the FCC deemed safe, created cancer, multi-site cancer in lab rats. So the very same thing that RF FCC guidelines are based on, as safe, caused these multi-cancer sites on rats. So we have a problem there with the FCC granted. So the question is, why would the California legislator finally grant the firefighters in Los Angeles an exemption to the SB 649? I have legal documents that granted an affluent community in Wilton Manor, Florida, a moratorium on future wireless infrastructure. Why would the town of Poughkeepsie in this case afford the citizens of Poughkeepsie the same protection?
Play note, that's the three-minute one.
At least, property value protection. Okay, so there are 100 towns that are fighting this kind of thing. Listen, there is a code of federal regulations, the CFR, you guys know about it, and I say that what we need is an environmental assessment, as well as it should include the 1508.8 effects that includes economic aesthetic-related effects on air, water and other natural systems, of which we, the people, are a part.
Thank you for providing the information.
So I'll provide you with the information, readings I took all around Poughkeepsie, guys, please. This is, and the chart that will show you what it does for prolonged contact. Thank you so much for listening, this is the issue of our time.
The more information we have, the better for the future, that's, thanks. Anyone else in the audience wish to comment on this project? I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Go around the board for additional comments. Start with Peter this time. You mentioned that you had an FCC emissions report recently completed.
T-Mobile does one of those for every site that's modified or new sites, yes. It's an internal document.
Have you made, or can you make a copy of that document available to our town engineer to review?
We can, I mean, I can certainly check with T-Mobile, I know there's proprietary information in it, and when we've done that before for other towns, we redacted certain parts, but we can certainly show you the cover page that the engineer stamped and said everything was compliant.
I think it would be important for us to have a copy of that document, you know, moving forward. I mean, we are not engineers.
And we can provide that, you know, before the building permit is issued, because it's basically just going to say that T-Mobile's compliant with the FCC regulations.
You see, we are, we are seeing more and more applications for this, these types of apparatus. And like I said before here, you know, we don't know what we don't know. So I think before we move forward on this, I would, I would like to have the board be provided with that report, so that we can have someone review it to make certain. I mean, not that I doubt your word that it's fine, but I don't see how we possibly can make a decision before viewing a copy of that report.
Again, all that reports, it's only a six-page report, it's just going to tell you that based on the engineers that study emissions across the US, that the site is compliant with the current FCC regulations. That's all it's really going to say.
We have responsibility here to perform our due diligence.
Understood.
And lacking a copy of a report that's usually been performed on an issue here that clearly is of relevance.
That's why I would ask that we just make it a condition to the permit, because it's just going to say again that it's compliant to the regulations.
Well, I'm sure we could do that, because if there's something in that report that we find disturbing, I don't think we would want to jump the gun here by issuing an approval before we even had a cop, a chance to review a copy of the report.
Yeah, we have provided.
I mean, do, get it to us right away, and we can come back here next month, and we'll be fine, but I don't think we can move forward really without, without knowing that we've done that.
All right, I mean, we have provided it to other towns when they requested it, so I can certainly check, but it wasn't required as part of the application, that's why it wasn't in the package, so.
Well, you know, we're in an evolutionary process here, so that we're kind of feeling our way forward. So there might be questions that we should be asking that we're not, but the more familiar we become with the process and with the, with the technology, the better informed we are, the better questions we'll be able to ask.
Okay.
Thank you. Well said. Ben, anything further?
This simple thing, I wasn't on the board then, but from what I understand, this is revisiting an application from quite a few years ago.
I wasn't around either then, but I, yes, I think back in 2006 was the, the initial application, which at the time was asking for six antennas, only three of which were installed, so now they are coming back for the three additional as capacity necessitates.
Okay, so we are revisiting this, and I know that technology has changed, but I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that.
I don't have the history as to what was approved and why it wasn't approved, but yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks, Ben. Nicole.
I don't really have much here, I just, I think I would like more information.
On the emissions?
Yes.
And Bob?
Yeah, a couple of questions. The, why was that particular location identified as, as to add the capacity? Because you had an existing tower there, or?
Well, that helps. The only other way to do is to build a new tower, and we, no, T-Mobile doesn't want to build new towers, nor do most towns. That site is, I mean, a lot of it is decided by the RF engineers, as they look on a daily basis of call, drop calls, new customers, things that affect the network. And there's, this isn't the only site, I mean, there's multiple sites throughout the network that are, are being modified to increase capacity. So, well, they always start with the existing sites first.
And you mentioned it's upgradable to 5G, is that without any hardware changes, or do you have to replace?
That would be an evolution. Right now, we're talking 4G, but these antennas that are there would allow for 5G with further upgrades, which mostly are upgrades within the.
Physical upgrade.
Say again?
Physical upgrade.
Upgrades within the cabinet, technology, softening boards and, and things within the cabinets.
You'd have to come back in and.
It would be strictly a maintenance issue at that time, it's just upgrading equipment within the cabinets. And that's a progressive thing that happens continually in all sites. These antennas would just allow that upgrade to happen.
Okay, imagine, imagine fifth generation would be a different frequency.
Uh, T-Mobile's moving forward on 5G rollout using existing frequencies.
Same spectrum, okay. Okay, just faster equipment.
Yeah, technology is allowing those upgrades.
One last, last question, this report, does it include the data that was collected that led them to the conclusion that it's compliant with FCC? Is that information part of that report?
I'd have to look and see, because again, like I was saying earlier, it's just basically it's going to be stamped by an engineer that is certified in emissions, that the site is compliant based on the type of antennas, the frequencies and the power going through.
Something has to lead him to the conclusion that it's compliant.
I'm not exactly sure, I can certainly look and see. It's just, it's an internal report T-Mobile does for every site, so.
I think it would be, it would be helpful to see all of that kind of information.
I will make a note of that, so. I mean, for this type of report, they're basically relying on the engineer that's stamping it, that's saying it's compliant, so.
All right. Is that it, Bob?
That's all.
Or still defer? Yes. All right, we've got some new information here today and some stuff on, and discussions in this report, I think as Peter pointed out, would be interested to see, so to give us some time to, to review all this, I think we're going to defer today and have you come back and show us that data as well, and give us time to digest some of this other information we've received. So, let's see, probably come back in October.
Mm-hmm, next meeting.
I would modify the closing of the public hearing to adjourn the public hearing instead to October 17th, 2019.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
I move that the planning board determine that the application is incomplete for seeker review. Now the planning board defer action on site plan application pending a revised submittal and subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said response to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive of, but not limited to, the following one through six.
And number seven to provide that report.
Number seven on the.
To provide that report that Peter asked for the.
Yes.
The redacted, whatever. Second. Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Hey, thank you.
Thanks, see you next month. Oh, just had one more question, that, you know, you, I could see the shielded canister on the roof, the, the new antenna would be further back from the roof, it would be even less visible, is that correct?
When you look at the plan, it's on a metal platform, it's kind of parallel to the roof edge.
Parallel to the roof.
Yeah, basically, it'll be approximately the same distance as the existing one, just on the other corner of the platform.
It'll look like another smokestack there.
Basically.
From certain areas of the parking lot. All right, thanks.
Yeah, I drove around that today just to see, and you really can only see it directly from the front where those tennis courts are.
A couple of spots, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's heavily tree, both deciduous and evergreens, so.
Thanks again. Next up on the agenda is South Road Crossings, public hearing, secret review and coastal consistency review and subdivision review, minor and site plan review for proposed minor subdivision, creation of an ODA open development area on the rear hotel lot, and construction of five new buildings, including the five-story hotel, bank, two retail sites and a retail coffee shop with associated landscape and parking. Zone VH Business Highway at South Road, it's an unlisted action. Joe Goff, Goff is the owner, sorry for mispronouncing that. Welcome back, guys.
Good evening.
See what transpired since last time.
Well, we, we've been working to answer some of the town engineers and consultants comments, we've worked through most of those comments, there's still some outstanding issues that are just minor in nature from the engineer's office, I believe. We've, we've talked with Andy and, from their office about some of those, some of those items there. We, we have started to prepare for the renderings of the site, based on discussions we had with staff for ZBA as we get forward for signage, we know we have to go for variances for the height of the hotel and those things, so we have some of those materials for you as well tonight.
All right, thanks. This is Austin Kristen, so Mike?
Yeah, yeah. So as Ken mentioned, you know, a lot of the issues, engineering issues, I believe, have been addressed, although Don can certainly speak to anything else there. I think primarily the, the open question has to do with some of the transportation impacts, we've been working with the applicant, and they've been working with DOT to try to make sure that the DOT is comfortable with the, the right-in, right-out entryway, and I believe there's some additional information that they need to evaluate, so that's the main reason why we're, we're basically suggesting that we defer this, so that we have that information before we make our secret determination. Most of the site plan comments that were in Kristen's letter are relatively minor. There are a couple also transportation issues related to the, the entries to Building One and Two and the proximity to that, to Route Nine, that I think are, you know, would be worth looking at also in this interim, so we should, we should make sure that those are not lost. And they're in her review letter. I think that's it.
All right, thanks. And as Mike alluded to engineering, is, how are you, part of you with this project?
We don't have too much left, most of it's gotten worked out. Probably the biggest thing we have left, which is not going to be very hard for, for them to do, is to show the driveway connections on the north and south and how they fit in with the adjoining building, similar to that drawing right there. And we have some, a few swift comments, but we're winding down.
All right, thanks, Don. This is a public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. I see no one has signed up for this project, but is there anyone in the audience wish to comment on it tonight? Seeing that, I move we adjourn the public hearing to October 17th, 2019.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Let's go around the board for comments. Start with Bob.
Uh, yeah, I thought that Kristen had one other comment at the work session about a concern from Locust Grove about visibility of the building that's going to rejoin their property.
Yeah, I wasn't certain if anyone from Locust Grove was going to be here or not, but she said that she had the opportunity primarily.
Well, I, I was, I was out there talking with Ken Stogris for other reasons and Kristen showed up at the same time I was there.
Well, she's having her wedding, so it's why it's so popular.
And Ken explained to me his concern, the height of the building and if, if there's an adequately high, uh, shield there to prevent, to block the view from the grounds where people walk and hike, you know, that would satisfy his concern. I don't know if you've talked to Ken?
I have not, but, um, we did, uh, Kristen did allude to that, so we did look at that. Locust Grove's kind of rough grade elevation i- is roughly around 185 feet. That doesn't include any trees or anything. Our elevation's down about 177, uh, for the finished floor of the hotel. The roof would be up around 243 at the highest point, the smallest part of the parapet, which is the middle section right in here. Otherwise, it's six feet between the highest and lowest point of the top of roof. But when you look at where Locust Grove is, which isn't, doesn't just show here, it's about 1,500 plus feet apart. You have the complex in between, uh, which is the office buildings and the other. And the row of trees that are right next to Locust Grove, if you even put those at 40 or 50 feet tall, which there are some really old growth trees around that property, immediately in your direct vicinity, you'd be looking almost vertically to get over those trees. So, at that distance, they wouldn't be able to see the hotel at all because the trees itself are tall enough in the immediate vicinity that it would block that.
I beg to differ because I live not too far from there, which is why I'm so excited about this project because that hotel's an eyesore. But, um, I hike through Locust Grove all the time and I can tell you that when it's winter time, you can see everything because there's no leaves on the trees.
Understood.
Um, so, I think you guys are going to have to think about some type of shielding there. Whatever, maybe you guys can brainstorm and come up with something, whether it's some type of trees, fencing, something.
Or see, yes. Nicole, is it the land that, that Locust Grove owns? Because I know that they own quite a lot of land along, you know, as far as River Crest Road, right? So, is that, are the hiking trails, uh?
Right, yes. The hiking trails go very, they come very close to both Route nine and, and the, what is that river there?
River Crest Road.
Yeah.
Way down to the river.
Yes. So.
So, apparently there's, at least from your viewpoint, you haven't seen evergreens that are blocking to the south.
The real, the winter view is your concern then, really?
Oh, absolutely.
Guess you should look to see if there are any evergreens in that particular path to the hotel, but if not, then investigate that. Bob, did you have anything further?
No, I just think it'd be worthwhile to go down there and walk the grounds with Ken and just get an idea of what his concern is and where exactly it is. You can do that in the middle of December when there's...
All right. Nicole, anything else from, from your standpoint?
Uh, I wanted to talk to you guys about parking. Is there enough parking for the, for you, for what you have proposed?
We're, we're, we do have more than what the code is required. It is not individually broken on the lots equally. Because of the ODA development lot, it kind of splits the hotel area, but we're proposing 252 and 248 are required.
So, but you'll have shared parking, correct?
Correct. There's, there's going to be cross-access easements for the utilities, snow plowing, maintenance, stormwater.
Because I know that you guys were talking about possibly McDonald's coming here, for instance, or, or, or someone like that. If, if McDonald's, for instance, McDonald's, I'm just throwing it out there. If a person like McDonald's came here and saw this and they would say to you, "I want to buy it" because they are more retail than they are food, um, and they would want their parking and they wouldn't want to share.
Well, the way we're, we're subdividing, I mean, they would have to buy the remainder of the entire project and that's if the applicant and that was willing to sell them the remainder of the project. Which would give them the opportunity to redevelop or redesign what is in the front for parking that would work for them. You know what I mean? As the applicant has proposed, you know, this is what the plan is. If, if a standalone different entity came in, obviously we'd be back for a site plan amendment that would redistribute the parking in and amongst that area, but as far as subdivision goes, I don't foresee us doing another for subdivision, but we, you know.
Okay. So, ODA is the only...
At, at this time, that is all we're looking for, right? For the hotel itself. The rest would remain as one parcel.
Anything else?
No, that was it. Thanks.
Thanks. Ben?
I know DOT traffic studies is an issue with this project and I see that DOT saying they just got comments on the 17th of December, September, and they won't have any response till October. But aside from that, we know that's going to be dealt with. Internally, I don't see anything from the fire department. I see the truck turning plan here and you indicate the trucks that could be used. What about fire department and emergency vehicles and things like that?
Yeah, we've met with, there Arlington Fire and there is a, a letter in, in the file from them, a review. We've, we've talked through different scenarios where the FTC, the FTC connections are hydrants, because one of his concerns in the last round was whether a hydrant was remaining out front or not, and it is remaining out front. So, we have worked through a lot of that with him and talked to him. He does, he had a couple, uh, comments in his which were, uh, design-related to the right-in from across the street. I should just leave it on. We're creating the, the same right-in that is, is here in other location and he just asked to reduce the height of the raised mountable curb so that it's sho- closer to the ground for vehicle maintenance and that, so that was a minor comment to the design that was there. And he asked us to actually give this a name so that when they're driving down Route nine and they have number 254 go off or whatever, they don't have to figure out which one of these buildings would be 254. They can see the name and know the road and find it easier for emergency response. That was the basis of his comments at this time.
Okay. And even...
I'm sorry?
Even aside from emergency vehicles like deliveries or trash garbage trucks and things like that?
Yeah, we've...
Easy access, you know, for picking up and not getting in the way.
We've looked at all, all of the garbage truck maneuvers. There was some question about the one behind the hotel because of the angles, which the hotel manufacturer, that's the way, the developer, that's their standard protocol, they use it all the time. So, we're asked for more information from them on how it operates individually so that we can answer that question.
Okay.
But it, it's, would be just a minor tweak to that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben?
Peter? Just one quick question. We looked at this a few years ago with a different applicant. I'm, I'm trying to remember if the access egress was signalized. Was it, was it, was it a signalized intersection? Okay, was there some reason why you chose not to go with the signalized?
Um, at, at this point, the development didn't warrant that based off of the traffic volumes and the different types of, uh, uses that we were proposing now.
Have you, has DOT offered any view with regard to signaling that?
Well, they did respond initially in seeker and didn't ask for any of that. They did, there was a meeting and discussion along, you know, when this project originally came out with DOT and that was not even proposed back then. So, it's never come as a formal comment. Obviously, as Ben said, we're expecting formal comments from them on the second.
So, was it really, was it your choosing not to use the signalize because it's not, in your view, required?
It was our choice not to, correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Still have the, you're still going to keep that position, um, that drive open to the gas station?
Correct.
So, you can get to the light.
Correct, which is the way most of the traffic moves through that plaza and through the mobile now to get to the light, to go north.
But just the, the older plan that, you know, had signalized access, was that a new light that they were going to put in there?
It was a new light. It was a left-out only. That's all it was.
Coming out of the property, turning left to go north.
Correct. Correct. It was signalized with, uh, the intersection that's here, off-angle, but to work for these, this vehicle is to go left, will these go left there.
The, the current intersection that comes from the plaza across the street into the gas station.
Correct. It was to widen that intersection to allow us to make the left-out.
So, the last thing we need is another traffic light put in.
Correct. That was a concern back then and that was part of the reason why the applicant, while looking at the volume and that, decided not to go down that path.
Okay.
All right. And anything else, Peter? If you have. I mean, from my standpoint, that's, you know, my concern is the, is all the, is the traffic U-turns, you know, for people trying to get back north, northbound again. And there's probably going to be some cut through the gas station into the mall and out through that way and the queuing of, queuing of people doing all those U-turns needs to...
There, you know, and, uh, you know.
You said, I think somewhere it said about half the, you expect about half the people to come from the north and about half from the south. I assume most people coming to the hotel are going to be actually coming from the south too, so.
Yes, and, you know, one of the things that Phil's office from Mazor did some initial looks at is the amount of vehicles that it's adding per hour per the cycles of the light, just briefly off the top, and they estimated it approximately two vehicles added to every cycle, you know what I mean, of the light. So, it's not a significant impact and Route nine's traffic has reduced since the last time this was approved, overall volume. So, when we get the traffic numbers, the DOT comments, we can fully address that for the board and make them comfortable.
Just want to make sure it is, you know, you're not proposing any, lengthening any of the queues on Route nine.
Nope.
So, double check that the numbers support that.
Correct.
Is there a restaurant in the hotel?
There is, yes.
Okay. Is that, is there parking sufficient for that as well?
Yeah.
I just have to make an observation. I've commuted up, up and down Route nine for 50 years going to work and I, my opinion, of course, I don't have any data to back it up, that traffic is heavier now than it's ever been. I see it during the day, there's three lines of cars going north and south, there's no light traffic, you know. It used to be rush hour morning and night, but I, I just, I don't know how they arrived at that. I'm just curious how they decided it's less traffic now.
I don't know if you want to speak to it, Don, but, um, that came through the, I think it's the state counts and information that's provided for them based on the last time they did the, the street counts at that area. But it'll be included in, we can, we can speak to that.
Yeah.
Our response.
Yeah, I know what you mean. I could, used to go out at 10 o'clock in the morning for a dentist, then I'd be the only one on Route nine, 20, 30 years ago, but, but now it's just a constant traffic.
Right.
Too many people retired perhaps. Different work schedules these days. All right. I think we're...
I would like to ask if it's possible, just because we're really eager to move this project along, the hotel, they have contracts with the hotel and those type things. So, um, if there are any other outstanding items that you think we need to address before seeker, for seeker specifically, because we do have to hop back over to the town and the ZBA and we really would like to try and conclude those so we can help get there for the next meeting, other than traffic.
I think traffic is my biggest thing. I don't, I'm not aware of any others. Anyone else have any they're thinking of?
No. Okay. Thank you.
Site plan looks pretty, like it's coming together pretty well too. Just got to look for the queuing and the traffic movements and such within the site.
Understood.
All right.
I move that the planning board defer further action on this application and direct the applicant to respond to comments in writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, included but not limited to the following, one through 10.
All right. Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
We'll see you in October likely. Okay. Yep. Green down. Thank you.
Yeah. Turn around.
Next application, Vassar Inan Institute, seeker review and recommendation to the town board on zoning text amendment and site plan hearing for proposed construction of a three-story hotel, 50 rooms and attached two-story conference center and a restaurant with outdoor dining, parking and pedestrian improvements, demolition of the existing Williams House and any single-family residents on the same existing site as the Alumni House, to propose the zoning text amendment. It's a type-one action, Vassar College owner.
There it is. All right, it's coming up. Good evening. I'm Brian Swartout with Vassar College. I'm just going to introduce the project a little bit and then turn it over to the experts to walk through the site plan and some of the architectural designs. As I was preparing for this, uh, presentation today, I realized that it's been almost a year since we started talking about this project with the planning team. And, um, through the collaboration and feedback with the planning team, the feedback that we've gotten from the planning board, I think this project has changed pretty materially from when it was at the north end of the site to where we are today. And so, I wanted to thank you for that time and that feedback and the effort particularly the planning teams have been putting into this, uh, because we believe we made some changes that'll bring this to a good project that will benefit both Vassar and the local community. So, the project is a 50-room inn with 3,500 square feet of conference center space and a full-service restaurant that we're calling the Inan Institute. And you might ask, why would Vassar College want to build a hotel? If you think about the higher education market today, it's calling into question a little bit the value that higher education offers, particularly small liberal arts colleges like Vassar. With the growing tuition costs and the changing job market, there's really that question of value and Vassar wants to participate in that conversation, really lead it to demonstrate the value that we can offer. And the institute part of this project will allow us to convene people, you know, use, with our expert faculty, using their research and bringing experts from the local community, from the national community to really tackle issues that are important to this day and age and demonstrate how a liberal arts approach of looking at all sides of an issue can really make progress on some of these issues. Instead of, you know, what we see particularly in the national stage of people entrenching in on their sides, if you really look at things from a full perspective, you can actually start to make some progress. And we think that going through this process and, and presenting things through this institute, we will be able to, you know, demonstrate Vassar's value, which is really important to our mission and our approach to education. Another reason for us to build a hotel is the large number of visitors we get each year. They're prospective students, prospective employees, speakers, and, um, right now, we, we would like to have a quality place to stay in close proximity to campus. Many of our prospective students will come to campus, take their tour, do their admissions session and then continue on to their next site. And we think that this is really a beautiful area and if we can convince the visitors to stay longer and experience the campus and experience the community, they'll fall in love with it and, and want to come here either as students or employees. And that is, this project provides the opportunity for us and is important for us. Also, we don't have good meetings based on campus. With the age of the campus and the way that our operations have, excuse me, have evolved, there really isn't good meeting spaces to do the things that we need to do. And so, this, you know, the conference center space in this facility will provide the opportunity for that, for convening higher education groups, convening our board and other meetings that either we're force-fitting into spaces that exist today or we're just not able to have because of the spaces that we offer. We also think that this project has some economic development opportunities for this area. The institute program will bring new visitors here to the area, whether they're participants or speakers, that will eat, shop, get to know the area and perhaps even come back for another visit. We expect our current visitors, those prospective students that are currently coming for their tour and leaving, to stay longer and spend money and contribute to the economy in this area. And while this is not going to be a super high-end hotel, it will be a high-end quality that will... or speakers, that will eat, shop, get to know the area, and perhaps even come back for another visit. We expect our current visitors, those prospective students that are currently coming for their tour and leaving, to stay longer and spend money and contribute to the economy in this area. And while this is not going to be a super high-end hotel, it will be a high-end quality that will add another amenity to the Duchess County tourism that they are looking for. Finally, if we execute the institute part of this program well, it will bring national attention to this area. That will be a positive benefit for both Poughkeepsie and Duchess County and all the things that it has to offer. Up on the screen, you'll see a picture of the building and the location, which is located below the Alumni House where the Williams House currently sits. As we've considered how to lay this project out, and evaluated a number of scenarios of where to site it, and we believe the place where we settled now allows us to create a number of parking spots while preserving the majority of the lawn. And as you look here, you can see quite a bit of the lawn as it wraps around the front of the building there. Seventy percent of all of the green space that currently exists today is being preserved, and that was intentional so that we can make sure that we maintain the space that the community uses today to just either walk or for community events like the farmer's market. And there's more than enough space left for all of the events that currently exist and others that the Arlington Business Improvement District may contemplate in the future. It's also worth noting that while we may have settled on this site, we considered a number of sites before settling here. Some of them were quickly dismissed as just infeasible, but others were looked at fairly seriously. And a couple of those were the farm, the Vassar Farm, which is at the southern end of campus. But we really felt that that was too far away from campus in Arlington to really contribute to the Arlington area. We also looked at a site across the street from this where the tennis courts are. And at a quick glance, you might think that that would be a good location. It's open space, but when you think about the fact that building there would require curb cuts on College View, which would take away some parking from the Arlington area, it would require removing the tennis courts, which, like the lawn, the community uses. And it would put adults who may or may not be part of Vassar, you know, associated with Vassar in close proximity to two residences on campus, which was a risk that we weren't necessarily comfortable with. It just becomes less of an optimal site, which is, you know, so as we went through that review, we've settled on this location because it is a best fit for our goals, which is adjacent to campus but not on campus, so that it can be a conduit for the community to interact with the campus, but also create kind of a retreat for those on campus to step off and do the institute-type function that we're talking about. It's near Arlington so that it can contribute with the development of the area. It's near Alumni House, so it can, there's some potential for some synergies with that facility and for the two to work together. And it's an area to create a sufficient amount of parking for the program without taking green space away from the area while maintaining as much as we could, really maximizing that space. So it does require the removal of Williams, as you mentioned when introducing the project. And having made a decision to take Williams down, we've been working with the State Historic Preservation Office, or SHPO, to think through how to preserve this project and how to approach it. And through those discussions with SHPO, they have agreed that this is a good location for this project. They've also agreed that Williams is not a good candidate for adaptive reuse in this case. And so we've been working with them on a plan to preserve the history of Williams without preserving the building, which we are in the process of documenting with them. And so I mentioned that, you know, the site allows for creation of parking. There are 60 new parking spaces on site, and this is a complex program. We're talking about integrating the campus community with the off-campus community. So the question really is about how many people will be driving to the site and what kind of parking might be necessary. And so as we were working through that with the town, it became evident that the best approach may be to actually create a plan that will allow us to manage that kind of complexity, manage the peak demand, and make sure that we don't create a negative impact on Arlington. We like this approach because it allows us to put a decent number of spaces on the site while still preserving a large amount of the green space and managing the parking. And we'll get into that in a little more detail here shortly. And then on the design, we're going to be sharing a number of views of the design with you today. It is a modern design, which is consistent with Vassar's history of building, contemporary building as we build. But there are elements of the architecture that link with Vassar's history, with the local community surrounding it, and along Raymond Avenue. And from feedback that we've gotten from the planning board, we've expanded on a number of the details so that we can get into those and kind of share that new information with you today to help you understand some of those connections. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Ken to talk about site plan.
So, just back up one. So one of the things that has come up was, as Brian pointed out, is the lawn. As you see here, the darker hatch along the outside, almost all, I think, at this point, we're preserving all of the trees along Raymond, even for the access that comes in. We're utilizing existing area. There is a bench that has to be moved in that, but we're not really impacting any of the trees along the Raymond Avenue view corridor, which was important. When you look at the area where the word lawn space is, that's the area that we're losing for the building. We accounted for area north of the walk there that goes straight to Alumni for the primary, primary purpose of, that's where the majority of the events and functions happen. The only access is done through the bottom, which comes from College Avenue, through that little portion of land over to the right where the cursor is there. So if you move on. So in the development, when we went through site planning, there was initial conversations with the DOT about moving it to the north to be uptight with Arlington Square, which we've talked about before, presented further traffic problems as well as parking locations, which would have taken up more of that lawn space and area. So the discussion moved down to the southern end of the parcel where we have landed today. Just a clarification, it's 68%, not exactly 70, but it's 68% closed, of the lawn space that we are maintaining in the future. The parking, the, is dealt with in between two different lots. We've improved the drainage in the north, that lawn area. So as part of this project, we are doing geothermal. As it sits today, the majority of that lawn and the movement of what is now the farmer's market moves around because of the lawn has been compacted over so many years, it has really poor drainage. There's no drainage in there at all. So part of our project is decompaction of that project, that whole area, which will help renovate the lawn and allow it to function much better. We also are putting some drainage around the building to further move some of the stormwater around and treat it along the way in some bio areas and that, so that we can try and help that situation as well. We're creating an ADA pathway up to Alumni House, which wasn't there before. So again, that creates a, a community pedestrian accessible route to Alumni, which doesn't exist today. One of the other things that has come out of the project that we also are doing is south of here, if you would skip to the next area. Just south of our site, on the bottom of your screen, is the town sewer line, which is located on Vassar property, but there is no access to that line to do maintenance. So as part of the, sorry, part of the process, talking with Franco and the town, we've, and the school, we've created a connection point to the town line there, which will also grant a future easement to the town so that they will now have access to that line and be able to do, perform their maintenance and stuff. So again, as part of the project, we opted to go that direction to further that conversation there. As Brian pointed out, we did, we have been working with SHPO. We are working through an LOR, which is a letter of resolution to work towards taking the buildings down and how we're going to document them. Specifically, we've proposed it in to the department, based on their initial recommendations to us. We're following them for the most part to the T. So we're, we're working towards that as well and anticipate getting that shortly. The only other object thing that we wanted to talk about a little bit was parking management. So I'll let Brian start with.
So as I mentioned earlier, we have created a parking plan to try and manage the parking. And so we recognize the importance of parking in Arlington, and we've worked with the planning team and our consultant to try and create a plan that will manage parking so it won't impact Arlington while maximizing the green space for the community's use. And, you know, so wanted to mention how important Arlington is to us. It is our front door, and so the success of Arlington is really important to us. That's why we've invested in buildings in the area and then tried to attract residents there. It's why we support and participate in the Arlington Business Improvement District and their events. And it's why we've cited this project near it so that we can participate in the development of the area. So even without a formal plan, we would recognize the importance of parking and work to avoid impacts to the area. And so, and it's also something that we do regularly. You know, on campus, we have a number of large events, larger than we would even consider at this project, like commencement or Alumni Weekend, where we manage the parking on site and move people around so that we can avoid the parking implications or minimize them as much as possible. So that was the intent of this plan, to try and find a way to manage the peak, have the right amount of parking on campus for kind of normal everyday use, and then manage the peak demand through some sort of plan. And that's what we're going to present here today.
So, so as, as part of our plan, we did, we worked with the, the traffic consultant who's here today to come up with a, a parking management plan, which you have in your packet. We've, we've talked about doing a valet lot on, if you go back one for me, converting the, what would be the west lot, south of that area there, into a valet lot, which would allow the operator to park more vehicles in there. During, in the valet lot, we can get between, sorry, I don't have the numbers here, 80, 80 spaces in there, because we have 60 on site, and we're looking at about 80 in there. There is some discussions about exactly how to fit them in there, that we're working with, and whether the number is up or down a few spaces here or there. We'll work through that. But the reality is also on the other side, if you flip one more side down, over here, just put the cursor for me.
Touch screen.
Yeah. So off on to the, over by the tennis courts, that area there is currently being used for overflow event spaces on campus and would accommodate for just about 165 spaces in there as well, with close proximity. The other thing we have is the north lot, and we also have the south lot, which has plenty of spaces available at times as well. So we'll work with the, this town as to how to formalize the traffic management plan or the parking management plan, so that you feel comfortable. But Vassar's completely comfortable managing that parking as they have for years on other large events on campus.
Just a quick question, that said 165 spaces on the lawn area would be South Park or Valet?
It'd be South Park.
South Park.
Correct. And that would be South Park. And, you know, the nature of these large events are known. You know, it's, it's not typical that tomorrow someone's going to call and say, we're going to have 165 people come tomorrow. So these things are noticed, they're planned in advance, where the school and the operator know there's a larger event coming. They can direct people where to park and how to park there. And, you know, if the lawn is wet or isn't usable based on the time of year, they have the south lot and can shuttle people there and that. There are other spaces on campus that can accommodate, accommodate that at any given moment, basically.
Would hotel guests be parking there?
Hotel guests can fit on the site. On, on, on the...
You wouldn't be expecting them to park on that lawn?
No. No.
The lawn would be for larger events where we need to, where we know we'll need a large amount of capacity for an event. So we can guide the event participants to that lot as part of planning for the event.
And then the access from there to the...
There's, there's paths that walk out to the circle, that are existing paths that can get them out to the traffic circle and then follow the, the walking paths across to campus.
So they'd come down to the circle?
They'd come down to the, to the circle and then over.
That's right here.
Or, or up to Arlington. There's, there's, as Brian's pointing out, there's two different directions that, that they can walk in that way.
All right, continue.
Go on to architecture.
Great. And so I want to talk about architecture. I was going to back up and again give an overview of how we got to where we are. I think it'll be easier to...
Yeah.
So you've seen a lot of this before, and I wanted to thank the staff members and the board that met with us. We've tried to incorporate some of those suggestions and kind of clarify kind of what we're trying to achieve with kind of a simpler, modern building and show you the kind of the quality of what we're trying to do and kind of add and make some amendments to, in response to what you've, you've told us, in response to the architecture. So I wanted to start with the setting, the site. And Brian's already talked a lot about why this site was chosen, but as the design team, it was first and foremost the priority to, to keep this park-like setting for the community. Again, it's, you know, we've always seen it as a great link to town, but also kind of a touchstone that's just off campus but outside the wall. So we've always agreed, it's a, it's a wonderful location for this type of program. And then, you know, we are thinking about it both in summer and winter, as, as we were designing a modern building and using glass, what will it feel like in both seasons? And then this diagram just really shows a priority of that LA of trees and how the building relates to that LA of trees, and then how the lawn, this, the product has been really tucked south and into the hill as much as possible, so that that kind of upper form of the institute feels like a folly and the lawn can, can move around it. So that's, you know, we can get into a little bit more of the planning as I go forward. And then zooming into Alumni Hill itself, we looked a lot at the historic features and landscape of this site. There was always an access, a main access back to campus, and so that was always a driver as we moved the project around and decided on the massing and the diagram. This is a, the little central drawing is a historic, kind of picturesque views idea from the original landscape, and we have kept that idea in our massing, as you see when we show you the renderings. And then the scale, the kind of residential yet inn-like scale, trying to keep these buildings down to three stories was really important to us. Typically, with a program, a program like we had, a large institute and inn, you would probably get to four or five stories in that type of program, and it was really important to us. Alumni House and the neighboring homes. So, you know, this is the diagram. After, after breaking that program up, we kind of have what we think of as kind of a one building, but it's basically a, kind of a village of parts. The inn, which is Rest, Recharge, and Think in our diagram, and the institute, which is where you collaborate and convene. And these parts were developed as kind of have their own, yet simple aesthetics, so that they were elemental. We feel like the composition as a whole, the parts need to be simple. And so that's why you see kind of more simplicity in their, in their design. And so we wanted to start with this render, since it's really the main, it really gets across the, the partie of that project. So this, you're on, you're coming from the south, walking up the campus path towards Alumni House. It's a little mast in the tree there. The building's separated, and you have a low one-story lobby. So you can see over that lobby and through the lobby up to Alumni House still. We'll get a little bit more into materials, but we chose, as we tried to help this building recede into nature, we chose both glass and brick that we feel can do that, but in different ways. So the dark brick actually makes the building feel smaller. The glass can reflect nature. And with the glass, you know, we've heard a lot, it's looking bright in a lot of the renderings. We think that's just the rendering somewhat, but we are being very conscious as we choose the final glass to get it a little bit darker of a coating, because it's, we use these high-performance coatings anyway. And I think we'll show you some images of actual glass buildings that we think it will feel more close to than the renderings may show. And then I just wanted to zoom into this rendering to give you an idea of kind of what it would feel like to move forward and how Alumni House is framed. The, the gable roof of Alumni House is repeated in the inn, and then the dark, the dark brick is really framing. is really framing that view up to Alumni House. A lot of the inspiration for the materials came from campus. We're going to talk about the town context as well, but a lot of the initial thinking about what to do with a modern building for Vassar came from the existing and historic projects. So everything from the, the original main building and its deeper, richer brick color to the, all the way to the science, the New Bridge for Sciences and everything in between. There's, there's just a lot of masonry and now a lot of glass coming onto campus. And it's, as Brian mentioned, it's, it's been customary for the college to build in the contemporary era that they're in. So we think it's very appropriate that they're building a, a modern structure. Then these are two precedents that have been touchstones as we think about buildings in nature. The Bridge for Sciences again, and it's glass reflecting nature on the right. You can see the glass, you know, in, depending on the lighting, will feel very different. It may feel a little darker, depending on the sky color, depending on the view angle and if there's trees reflecting in it. And then the Russell Wright Manitoba House, we really have always thought of as a great example of a building that recedes in nature because of its darker color. And so that was one of the reasons we, we have chosen a dark color for the brick. It really works well, both in summer and winter, kind of receding. The darker colors really reflects the trunks of the trees we find, especially in the winter. And so that's part of the, the idea there. And so zooming in, we, as we develop more and more, we're kind of zooming in to detail areas of the product to show you the, how it's developing. It's very dark on the screen here, but we're using a lot of natural materials as you get onto the human-scale touch level of the building. So we have a, sorry, a, a wood canopy above your head. We have stone detailing around the, the vestibules, these small vestibules, and then the masonry, of course, the inn. And we just wanted to show also, we've, based on your comments, that the roof articulation wasn't really apparent or enough, we have raised the dormers to kind of really break that roof line. And so you'll see that in some of the other drawings as well. Another point here is the universal accessibility of this project. We think of this as a front porch, but we've made it completely wheelchair accessible right from, from all angles, so it will be a very, a very pleasant experience to approach for all, all people. So then we wanted to get into some more specific areas of the context. So we wanted to start on College Avenue, and these are a couple of the typical homes right across the street. They're two and a half stories with dormers, the third and the roof level. And they're very well screened by landscape. And so, I mean, part of the reason we placed the inn on this street is because it is a quieter piece of the program, relating to the residences, won't disturb, we feel it will be less disturbance. And then the, again, the dormers breaking that line of the third-level roof, we feel really helps create that simple rhythm, but to, to really kind of relate to those homes across the street. Of course, it's a little taller, it's a full three stories, not two and a half, but it's, and it's also set back that full fifty feet where most of the existing homes are not in compliance with that. So it'll feel a little bit farther back. And then our landscape architect doing a great job kind of screening and creating layers before the building. Another detailed shot, just moving into the inn, just to show you kind of the scale of the dormers as you approach on the path. We're on the sidewalk looking kind of to the north, northwest. There's a, we're really keeping deep recesses for the brick. The brick turns in these windows. It's, you know, we, I think of a simple building to some people can feel, you know, cheap, but this is a really high-quality building. It has thick walls because of the amount of insulation in this project, because it's a highly sustainable project energy-wise, so it's a thicker wall than you're used to. And hard to see in this view again, but the metal trim detail has articulation around the windows. And there will be solar panels on this, just this gable side of the roof, which are starting to be shown in the rendering, but still coming up with the final layout for those, but it'll be somewhat similar to what you see here. We just wanted to go around the back when we were talking about detail. This is, you know, a pedestrian-scale courtyard, but it's where vehicles will drop you off. So it's similar paving, so it's a very slow car space. And then the, the small awning that wraps around to the institute side, to the north and left, is where you get dropped off in the rain. We see it might be two drop-off locations. In, in good weather, you might just drop right in the center of the project there. And you get a really good sense of the reflectivity of how the institute isn't, you know, imposing when it's reflecting. It's, it is kind of dissolving a bit in different lighting conditions. I think that shows that pretty well. And then we wanted to zoom out to the entire Raymond Avenue context. So the map is, we're going to be moving from the south to the north along Raymond. Our site is kind of three-quarters of the way on the right there, the building footprint. Just to talk about kind of the, you know, what we're trying to do with the very diverse context that we're in. And, you know, we see a lot of Raymond Avenue being a, a mix of historic and modern. So we've, you know, I think a lot of what we try to do is design proportions and scale and just to relate to just materials, since there is such a diversity on campus. And we'll be showing you buildings that are just next to each other, so you can see how, how that plays out. I think you all know Raymond Avenue pretty well, but just to, to remind people what the context is. So we start at Skinner Hall, which is right adjacent, almost adjacent to the Science Building with its glass facade. I'll go through these fairly quickly. Kind of the historic center of campus with Taylor Hall and the library, right next to a very modern, more brutal structure, the Lockwood Library. And then moving along, you get Chicago Hall, another modern building that has kind of the dorm, the more brick dorms, but beyond, and the trees. Across the street, again, the residential as on College, same scale as, as the College have dorms. And then moving into town, again, very diverse. It is lower storefronts here, the Juliet Bookstore Corner definitely has a more historicist style, but it's, it's very much a mix as you go through town. Mostly two-story and one-story projects, just a, a few examples of kind of what we're seeing as, as you move past our site. The three-story bank and the Duchess County Water Building now. And as a part of this, I think one of the ways we think about the site, it's a very unique location. It's in a park. It's behind the trees. And so we made this new rendering to kind of show how the experience of passing the building is on Raymond Avenue. We're right on Raymond Avenue perpendicular to the institute. And this view shows really well that we've, we've cranked the institute and restaurant forty-five degrees, so it's less imposing on both the park side and the street. And really the, you know, it's in the canopy, the, the second story, those canopies are pretty low there, and so it, we feel like the, the glass is very appropriate in that way. And then we wanted to show a quick animation along Raymond, just to, there's been a lot of questions about how it feels to approach, what you see from the Southern Roundabout. So this hopefully will play, but this starts from the South Roundabout and just takes you past the site. Again, not a lot of context modeled on the street, but you get the idea of the, the scale of the trees. And really, we slowed down here to kind of show you how you see Alumni House through that low site, low part of the lobby. And then again, kind of as you pass the institute, it's not front-facing on Raymond. It really, you know, it, it torques forty-five to kind of make it a little more subtle. And then this, you know, just kind of showing how much of the park is left. We thought this demonstrated pretty well, as you, you have those views up to Alumni, depending on the time of year, from this area. But we thought this showed pretty well how much of the farmer's market area is really, it's really all still there, the part of the site that farmer's market uses today. And then this is the current street view. So just kind of helping you locate how far down that product feels like it starts. We thought that might be helpful. And then you've seen these renderings before, but again, with this glass, we're again looking at kind of quieting it down into a darker tonality, so it's, it's reflecting a little bit more of nature. The night view, we like that the restaurant and institute face town, so it will draw people from town and be a, a bit of a beacon. And then, don't have full material boards yet, but we just wanted to introduce you to the palette we're using. The, the darker brick has a lot of natural variation, the ones we're looking at. It's called a manganese iron spot. It has a, a little bit of a shimmer to the brick. Again, this is a, a glass product we did that is reflecting sky, but just wanted to keep that on the palette for reference. A more grade wood for the soffit, and these are granite that we're looking at for the surround of the vestibule. There's a couple color, colors of concrete pavers, and this is one of them. They're all this kind of the medium tone that we're looking at, and then the, the painted metals that, that match up with the project. And so that's where we wanted to end it, back to the, the lawn view. Again, really considering how this glass wants to get a little darker to kind of reflect nature like those existing buildings that we showed. And that's all I have for architecture.
All right, thank you, guys.
And we have the plans and elevations for reference if we need them, but we didn't think that we'd all seen those, so.
Appreciate the additional, all those additional renderings and the video especially was, was helpful to see what you're, where you're coming from.
Good.
At this point, let's move forward with Eric's comments.
Okay. Let's add a comment first and then-
Yeah. Staff's prepared a recommendation. The, a lot of the focus since the previous review was in the new parking management plan. There was a lot of concern by the board about a site with proposing parking less than might be required by the combination of three uses proposed. The management plan does seem to go be the right direction in concept. The con, the, the comments mostly focus on exactly how it would be implemented, specifically when, providing for the valet parking, providing for use of the parking on, on the campus, how and when that would occur and what circumstances. So we were looking for some additional information to flesh that out, so it could become, it's a fairly unusual item to include in a, in a site plan approval. So we'd be looking to work with you to, to finalize, finalize that if the board is comfortable with it. That was the focus of a lot of our comments. The, then I guess the engineer had some items. I'll, I'll just point out the, there were some questions raised and new information provided that resolved, pulled together the various quantification of site issues, disturbance, wetlands and such like that. The conclusion is that the sewer connection to the south is, is not, does not require an acquired source permit, because it only, was going to use some two thousand square feet, which is far below the threshold for any kind of a permit, and it will be covered by Army Corps Review in any case. And then I think Don had some-
Yep.
-items?
Once again, we're, we're whittling down the comments. We don't have, we don't have that many that are of any significance. We're working on the sewer with them, on the sewer design, and probably the SWIP is the other major component that we're working on.
Right, yeah, they're creating that path up the, up the hill there, and that, and make sure all the, the water flow come down, coming down is correct.
Yep.
All right, thanks, Don.
That said, the, those are our comments. We're also still waiting for some information before. The recommendation for tonight is for the board to defer any action on, to start the public hearing, open that for people to speak, and then to defer action. We're still waiting on a couple of items to be closed out for the environmental review. One is that the, the resolution, the letter of resolution for the disposition of Williams House that you alluded to earlier. For technical reasons, we need to hear from the state that it meets their criteria-
Understood.
-for that, so we're waiting for that. That's, that's mostly the main one, and then there would be the, and then the parking plan, of course, we need to see how that's going to work out, or we could consider the environment, any action on the environmental review.
So likely, likely it would be adjourned to November as well, then?
Mm-hmm.
So it's only a couple days left to get in for October, so.
Oh. I mean-
As far as discussing further details on the parking management plan and getting ship a letter and-
We're, we're, actually, we were hoping to get a ship a letter today. It was their, their, their response period ended by today, but we have not received it today. So we're hoping to still get on, I mean, again, this application needs to move forward, so we're hoping to continue the public hearing if, for the seventeenth, if we can work out the details between, to, between staff and our staff. Between that time, we are going to get, hopefully get some of those comments, and then by the October seventeenth, we can get that resolved so that we can get back in front of the town.
Okay, we can always adjourn it again if-
Correct.
-delays happen.
All right. Thank you.
It is a public hearing, so at this time I move, we open the public hearing for this project?
Second.
Moved to seconded, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion passes five to zero. There's several people signed up for this, to speak here, so I'll go through them in order. And again, in the interest of time, we'll actually try to keep your comments to three minutes. And first up is Miriam Rossi.
So dear Planning Board members, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Miriam Rossi. I'm a professor of chemistry at Vassar College, and I've taught there for thirty-seven years. For thirty-six of those years, I've lived in Williams Apartments. We aren't alone. Other faculty members have lived there close to forty years. Vassar has a lot of land, over a thousand acres, and it would make sense to locate the inn and institute elsewhere. So with my comments, I'd like to establish that the location of the Vassar project on the Alumni House lawn is inappropriate. These buildings were an early example of a landscape planning initiative by a renowned architectural firm, Hunt &amp; Hunt. They should be celebrated for their hundredth anniversary, not torn down. As far as I can see, it is the only green space until you get to the Vassar Farm or Spratt Park in the city of Poughkeepsie. Placing a new building on a site where no other building existed before eliminates green space, no matter how clever the architects are, and it's disrespectful towards the community. The apartments were built in nineteen twenty-one with a generous fiftieth reunion gift from Harriet Williams, an eighteen-seventy alumna of Vassar College for female faculty members. They used to live in main building together with the students, so it, there's a lot of history there. The incongruity of tearing down buildings donated by one alumna only to replace them with a parking lot for another building donated by a more recent trustee is apparent, and it's disrespectful of Ms. Williams' memory. Finally, this forced eviction is obviously disrespectful towards the faculty members and their families that live in the Williams complex. At its core, a teaching institution only needs two constituents to function: students and those that teach them. The administration's role should be to facilitate this. As was already mentioned during the July meeting, there are continuing faculty and short-term visiting faculty that live in Williams. For both of these constituencies, the Williams Apartments provide an important service. In particular, the second constituency, the visiting faculty, they benefit by living in the smaller, cheaper apartments in Williams. Several tenants have described them as the nicest places they have ever lived. They are perfect for young faculty members starting their careers under uncertain conditions. They are perfect for young faculty members starting their careers under uncertain conditions. There already is a housing shortage at Vassar, and with these apartments removed, it will only increase. In closing, the current Innen Institute project demonstrates a lack of respect for the community, some of Vassar's employees, and the memory of a generous alumna. While the merits of Vassar's Innen Institute can be debated, demolishing the faculty house with the largest number of apartments is short-sighted and should be reconsidered. Thank you.
All right, thanks for your comments. Next up, Franco Caruso.
Thank you. I have a PowerPoint here. Still here, right?
Oh, I believe you had, had something set up with Jeff here.
Oh, it's here. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Meanwhile, I can provide these documents.
I have to give this PowerPoint to the board.
Buonasera.
I think there are copies for any one of you. Okay, thank you. Okay. All right. So William House was a gift from one of the first alumna in 1870, Harriet Williams. The college was initiated in 1861. The historic profile of these three buildings cannot be denied. They were built by one of the most famous architects of the country, the Hunt family. Architects Hunt and Hunt were part of the Hunt family of architects, and you have the list there, many of them. And beside Williams, they built the facade, the grid hall, and the east wing of the Metropolitan Museum of Art in New York City, and the pedestal of the Statue of Liberty. More about the builders. I got this website for the Architecture Digest where the most iconic buildings of every state in America are shown. Page two of this website shows this building there. We will see more details about that. But who made this? Well, the architect that created the family group builder of Williams House. You have better detail, detail of this building. The previous picture was taken from the pond. And this is the largest private owner home in the U.S., built by the Vanderbein family, also made by the Hunts. Slide 40 of this 51 shows another Vanderbein mansion made by the Hunts. So how the administrator can ignore these features? I'm not surprised that one of the most important Vassar professors in the architectural area, Nick Adams, retired, recommended to the administrator to not destroy Williams. His advice was ignored. Now, how Williams buildings are inserted in reality of the Hudson Valley? Let's compare with the landmark in the, like the FDR Mansion Museum Library. Inside Williams, you can see here, you can observe this handle door. We have four doors with that. They are still the original. They are rare. How to find these octagonal nodes? They are also found at the library in FDR Mansion. These are switches that we have. This is the, I don't have, okay, here. Here is the one that is the original one. So it has modern pail details, and you can see here just at the center. And they are so rare, sorry, so rare that when they, they needed to update was they displaced those on the right. So this almost impossible to see this again. Also, this found at the FDR. These objects, these lights, also found at the FDR Library. So the fireplace, very similar to one at the FDR Library. So let's look at the exterior, just one minute. The exterior is just going, we saw before it's like paradise, and now we're going to the purgatory, at least. 20 years and almost has completely stopped maintaining this building property. You see details on the left of this entrance. This part has been eliminated because it was becoming a useless. This door here on the right is missing, not replaced. There were buildings that were symmetric, they're not symmetric anymore. And this entrance here, the 171, has the glass broken. I personally place a scotch tape to keep them. This here is signal, please be careful. Keep this door closed because it can be blown by bad weather. This is the four building destroyed, not only Williams. There are four of six, two-thirds of these, two of Steinbeck Hall to be erased. Here, another documentation of sunset cannot be repeated. Alumna House was made after the three Williams apartment, the three buildings. And so you see the roof here is different, is red. They couldn't get more, those that are now still in at Williams. So these are witness of the time gone, 100 years of time. If I have half a minute more, I would like to propose alternative location, if not being considered, if I have this time, please. So this is a place, this building is almost abandoned, there is no activity. You can see the roof is broken on the left. And this is 50 yards from the parking lot, and you have plenty of room for doing this. Not only, this is 150 yards from Skinner Hall. So if you turn right here where the parking lot is, go right, you find Skinner at 100 yards. So there are options at Vassar. This additional space available, you see the house here on the left, and you have additional space. So option two, southeast corner, this huge place just next to the parking lot. You see that? Option three, this, they didn't like that. Why not across Hooker Avenue here? There is plenty of room there. They say that it's too far from the administration, from, from, from Main Building. This is the same distance that we have from Williams. So final question. Certainly, it's a lack of respect for Harriet Williams' memory that Vassar's administration only wants to destroy this two-story building for a parking lot after recent donation. And I wonder, how this recent donor can accept or raise the donation of another alumna donor? So why Williams is a question that can be discussed, but I probably don't have time. But I can clarify any question if you would like to know about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that interesting history of Williams. All right, next up to speak is Michelle Lieber.
Jeff, thank you for the use of your computer.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Yeah, that worked out well.
I think so, sure.
Michelle had signed up. All right, seeing that, next up is Marta.
I'm not Marta.
No, I guess she's left.
But she asked me to read it on her behalf, is that all right with the board?
Sure.
My name is Breck Martin. I live on Darrow Place in Poughkeepsie. And I'm reading her verbatim here, what she'd like the board to hear. Marta lives at 10 South Clinton in Poughkeepsie. I'm very disturbed by the Vassar College plans for the Corner College Avenue and Raymond Avenue. The architecture there is historic and well-planned. It would be a travesty to tear down the Tudor-style stucco faculty housing to replace it with a 50-room hotel and unnecessary conference center. It is ironic that an institution that teaches the history of classic architecture and the importance of historic preservation along with open green space wants to destroy some of the oldest iconic green space in Arlington that's still left. The other green space is also slated for demolition of historic architecture and open space for yet another high-rise hotel and condo development at the former Arlington Elementary School. The planning board should deny permission for Vassar to proceed. The disruption to the neighborhood would be massive between the construction, demolition, paving, and the beginning of the end of the small-town feel of the off-campus neighborhood made up mostly of faculty housing. This planned ISO can never replace what will be lost forever. There are many other open spaces nearby on Vassar College's property, even one block further on Hooker Avenue, where such a project would not destroy so much character of a bucolic European village atmosphere, which is what always draws students and faculty alike to Vassar College. The people who will be most impacted by this plan don't even know what's going on or are afraid to come speak out against their employer, Vassar College. When bulldozers start tearing the treasure down, it's too late to stop the madness. Why does the town of Poughkeepsie always acquiesce to Vassar College's whims, like the $6 million roundabouts, which heavily impacted businesses in Arlington and traffic patterns in both the city and towns of Poughkeepsie? Vassar does not pay taxes. The taxpayers paid for the roundabouts, and all the neighbors who visit the area will experience the negative impacts of yet another bad plan. I was told not to bother speaking to you about this because it's a done deal. Why pretend to be listening before deciding? It is just a legal formality, or can you actually say no to Vassar's ill-conceived plan?
All right, thank you. Next up, she signed up, is Jonathan Gordon.
The town plan says zoning literally shapes the community as an essential tool in determining its character. Vassar seeks a zoning amendment, not to improve the character of the community, but to please a few of its donors and trustees. With the town's approval, the college proposes to demolish Williams House, replace it with a parking lot, and put a hotel, conference center, and restaurant on the park. This proposal should be rejected. It's bad for the families who live in Williams and will be evicted. These consist mostly of young faculty like myself. Many of them are saddled with student debt, and they depend on the availability of affordable housing near campus to be able to work here. And Vassar, in turn, depends on this housing to be able to attract top-quality faculty. It's bad for the college, which will be bulldozing its history. Williams is Vassar's original faculty housing, designed in 1919 to meet the needs of female professors who then lived in Main Building with the students. It was finished in 1922, and the apartments reflect their original residence. My apartment has a tiny kitchenette, but it has wall-to-wall bookshelves and a window seat to read on. These are professors' apartments. They're not what would be built, in theory, to replace them. Williams predates Alumni House up the hill and many of the beloved buildings on campus, such as Skinner Hall of Music, which wasn't built in the 1930s. If Williams is demolished, a living part of Vassar's identity will be lost that can't be preserved just by taking photographs or salvaging a few doorknobs. It's bad for the community. College Avenue is a quiet residential street. With this construction, its inhabitants will face an increase in traffic and noise. Vassar's record on considering the impact of construction on the surroundings does not inspire confidence. For instance, the ventilation noise from the college's new bridge building, mentioned in their proposal, has made parts of campus, including the Shakespeare Garden, sound like you're on a jumbo jet. And the building reflects road noise from Raymond Avenue at the houses across the street. It did not consider its surroundings. If you demolish Williams, instead of beautiful Tudor-style buildings, our neighbors will have busy parking lots outside their homes. Instead of trees to walk among, they'll have their way blocked by a conference center that looks like a modern office building. At the July meeting, planning board member Peter Finelli noted, "The question of whether rezoning constitutes spot zoning should be answered by determining whether the rezoning was done to benefit individual owners rather than pursuant to a comprehensive plan for the general welfare of the community." This change is clearly being sought to benefit only Vassar College, meaning that it would constitute spot zoning. Vassar could make a plan with benefits for the town as a whole, but that's not what they're doing when they propose to tear down apartments and to replace green space with a hotel. Vassar says the Innen Institute have already been paid for by their donors, but I think this plan comes at too high a cost to the rest of us. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Next on the sign-up sheet is Jeannie Quinn. Jenny.
Jenny, yes, Colabella, so. And I am here to speak on the Vassar and project on College Avenue. The College Avenue neighborhood is residential area. The large green space along Raymond Avenue is a beautiful open park. The neighborhood and the green park complement one another to create a peaceful environment, and it works for the people who live there. People walk their dogs on the sidewalks and through the park. They gather in the park for picnics and to throw frisbees with their children. And the weekly farmers market and many other community events bring the Vassar and Poughkeepsie communities together. The Williams faculty housing buildings, whose 100-year history make them worthy of historic preservation, provide beautiful sun-filled apartments with wood floors, floor-to-ceiling bookshelves, fireplaces, and screened-in porches. The people living there also contribute to the community. The scale of the residential neighborhood is small. It's people-friendly. There are no large commercial buildings and no visible parking lots. Vassar has come into this small community with a devastating proposal to demolish the three Williams buildings and a neighboring house and replace them with two giant parking lots for a new commercial enterprise, a hotel and a conference center. In contrast to the existing parking lot at Williams, which is small and hidden behind a building, the two giant parking lots in Vassar's proposal are located right next to the sidewalk with a total length of perhaps 200 feet. These ISOs would completely alter the character of the residential neighborhood. They'd increase the already substantial automobile traffic, and they would make pedestrians feel much less safe. The current zoning law states that, and I quote, "The creation of a safe pedestrian environment is a principal goal of the town. Parking lots, access driveways, and streets shall be designed to avoid and minimize the potential for pedestrian-vehicle conflicts." Vassar's project would make a mockery of this important goal. The current zoning law also states that the institutional zone provides protections for the continued growth and operation of the relevant institutions," end of quote, "while ensuring that nearby residential neighborhoods are protected." Vassar's project would also make a mockery of this assurance. In addition, Vassar's proposal would ruin the large green park along Raymond Avenue that is the only place where the Vassar and Poughkeepsie communities regularly come together. For these and many other reasons, I urge the planning board to reject Vassar's request to amend the text of the institutional zone. The proposal would be a tragedy for the College Avenue neighborhood. Thank you for listening to my concerns, which I shared with many of the people in the College Avenue community.
All right, thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Last person signed up is Sam Train. Or Sam, okay.
If it's okay with the board, I'd like, my son wants to speak, he'd probably have about a minute, and then I have a couple of comments as well after, if that's okay.
Sounds perfect.
Hello, my name is Ziggy Train.
Oh, I have to turn, turn that one on, and it takes a couple of seconds.
Hello.
Here we go.
My name is Ziggy Train. I'm a fifth grader at Arthur S. May School in a Weebleows Two and Park 122 Arlington Reform Church. I live in the Third Ward. Please do not build the Vassar Institute on the Green Park along Raymond Avenue. Our community needs this space for fun activities during the Arlington Street Fair, the Taste of Arlington, and the Christmas Parade. We need the farmers market, and the vendors need Arlington. Kids love to run and play there with friends, and it's beautiful for people who drive by every day. Please do not destroy our Green Park.
Thank you.
Just a couple of follow-up comments. I know there's been people here that have said a lot, brought forward a lot of facts, quoted stuff in the town as well. I've lived here for just about 20 years with my, with my wife. Both my kids were born here, and I've noticed the steady increase in traffic, especially after the change with the roundabouts in there. My biggest concern is the traffic is going to, through an area that's already congested, is going to continue to get worse with this hotel. And parking is another issue. Every day coming down there, especially during the school year, parking is horrendous. It doesn't leave much parking for the street fairs or anything else that goes on over at the park. And now with the, with the possibility of building this hotel, what's the parking going to become like? People are going to go over there, try and park in the hotel parking lot, maybe it's full, so then it's.
Just a couple of follow-up comments. I know there's been people here that have said a lot, brought forward a lot of facts, quoted stuff in the town as well. I've lived here for just about 20 years with my wife. Both my kids were born here, and I've noticed the steady increase in traffic, especially after the change with the roundabouts in there. My biggest concern is the traffic is gonna, through an area that's already congested, is gonna continue to get worse with this hotel. And parking is another issue. Every day coming down there, especially during the school year, parking is horrendous. It doesn't leave much parking for the street fairs or anything else that goes on over at the park. And now with the possibility of building this hotel, what's the parking gonna become like? People are gonna go over there, try and park in the hotel parking lot? Maybe it's full, so then it spills out onto the street, over into the sides, and where does the rest of the town park that wants to go and enjoy the park especially? I notice that this building, they say it's about 68%, if I recall, but it cuts in almost halfway through the park. So now you've got this piece, you've got two pieces of land here where it used to be one big, open piece of land for everybody to enjoy. And that's my biggest concern, is now we've got this, got a cut, and there's a lot less space to, for the rest of the community to enjoy. And while I know that the street fairs and the farmers' market don't seem to take up a lot, then there's no more room for growth in the coming years within any of this. And myself, personally, I'd like to see the green space continue to be available. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Sam.
I'd like to commend your son for the courage to get up and speak in front of a big group like this. It's very well done.
Thank you very much.
Next is Jennifer Goldschmidt.
I live with my husband, Neil Levenger, at 6 Fulton Court, next to my neighbor, Mary Jane Parazzi and Mario Parazzi, at 2 Fulton Court. There are four houses on our street. I'd like to start by saying I support Vassar's plans to expand its efforts in general to share and integrate its resources with both the local and national communities. It's something that I think is central to the purpose of higher education, and if that's the goal of this project, I commend Vassar for that intent. I also very much support the idea of such an institute being located in a way that it doesn't negatively affect anyone. And I think Vassar has the space to do that. I heard wonderful ideas today, both myself, I liked the Hooker Avenue idea very much, and I think shuttles could accommodate that idea if necessary. And I also liked the idea of a building like this within Vassar's campus to break the invisible curtain, to bring people within Vassar, Vassar's campus, from the community, invite us into Vassar's campus, rather than keep us beyond its borders. For the sake of transparency, I went to Wesleyan University, and there's nothing that Wesleyan University doesn't have their hands in, in the region, in order to keep that collaboration alive. Our concerns include if the project were to go forward here, both sounds during construction and during events that we would hear at nighttime on our quiet street. We would be concerned about lights. I'm particularly concerned about the request to rezone 157 and 159 College Avenue, which are residence, residential homes that are a buffer behind our street to Vassar as an institution, and they allow these homes to kind of be a little block together. And that rezoning would make us vulnerable to anything Vassar wanted to do with those properties that was institutional. So, we stand against that rezoning. I'm curious to know if they intend to raise either of those buildings, or touch any of the trees behind each, which currently create a lovely area of nature and wildlife, both. I won't go into what wildlife, but lots and lots of birds and deer, and one fewer woodchuck as of yesterday. He was unfortunately living in our garage, but generally lots of wonderful wildlife. We would support also what we heard today about updating Williams, because I think there are ways to make that building really renewed for this era with the right paint and to show respect for the history and the community. So, I think those are my points and my questions. Fulton Court is fully surrounded by trees on all sides between Fulton Court and Vassar's buildings right now, and this project with those rezonings would make that, those trees and those properties very much vulnerable. So, the three properties behind Fulton Court, 157, 159, and I think 155, 153, all faculty and Vassar-owned land, but residentially zoned. So, I hope that there is a way for Vassar College and the residents of Poughkeepsie to work together to continue to find ways to welcome one another without causing harm. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for your comments. There was no one else sign up for this public hearing, but is there anyone else that has felt they wish to speak?
Hello, Ann Schurshin. I'm the Sixth Ward Town Councilperson, and I emailed you my comments earlier today, but I just wanted to highlight a few things. Is, one, I really would like to see them do a different calculation on the impact on the lawn. Currently, they're not including the small triangle of grass that's between the walkway up to Alumni House and College Avenue. So, I'd like to see the entire lawn, all the grassed-in area from College to Fulton, be included as part of the lawn, and then see what the total impact will be for the Inn and the Institute being placed on it. And I've seen the new drawings. I'm still not warming up to the Inn. I just don't think it's an attractive building. I think they could reflect some of the architecture in the area better and blend it into. They said it was supposed to look like a residential building, but to me, it's just dull. So, I would really like to see them do something to it to make it blend in more cohesively to the neighborhood. And also, I really don't like the glass hallway, and I'm just glad I'm not going to be the person to clean it. So, lastly, anything they can do to minimize the impact on the lawn would be greatly appreciated, and also appreciating that they're keeping the trees along Raymond, and it appears that they're gonna have minimal impact to the trees in the area. Thank you.
Is there anyone else which is to talk tonight? Seeing none, I move, we adjourn the public hearing to October 17th, 2018.
Second.
That's right. Yeah. Moved in second. We call to question all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Thanks, everyone, for your comments tonight and keeping them within the time limits. That was great. At this point, I want to go around the board for additional comments. I start with Bob.
The, a lot of comments about traffic on Raymond Avenue. When there's high-volume times, how do you protect against people using the parking lot because they can't find anywhere else to park? Not going to the Inn, not going to the hotel. Is there anybody? How do you prevent that from happening?
Can you repeat that? Sorry, I didn't hear the whole.
If I'm driving, if I'm driving down Raymond Avenue and I'm looking for a place to park, and there are times when you can't find any, there's a parking lot right off College Avenue where the hotel and the Institute are. How do you prevent people from starting to park there because they can't find any other place?
Typically, most of the hotels in that type situation, I'm not sure how the operations are gonna work specifically here, but you, when you go in, you have, you give, make model of your car and the license, and therefore, if they're seeing that the lot is full, and they only have 20 residents in the place, they can go out and look at that. I'm sure we can work through with operations on a method to prevent that.
And it's quite possible, if you've gotten that far down the road and you've decided to park there, you're gonna walk right, I'm assuming you're there for a temporary purpose, either to shop or to eat.
Yeah, for whatever reason, yeah.
So, so, let's, you know, a number of them will be eating, so they're gonna walk right by the restaurant in this property, and they may end up stopping there instead of going to wherever they're planning as well. So, I think that, you know, Arlington has some flexible parking. There are lots. In fact, we have one just north of Fulton, where people will park and walk to other places, and, you know, it's just something that happens. So, I think we'll have to monitor it as it goes and evaluate how we would respond if it became an actual problem.
I just think it's a real situation that can occur. Parking is gonna be an issue, no matter how you deal with it, right? And if there's volumes going to the Institute and the hotel, and they have no other place to go, you know, it's just gonna compound the situation, so.
And that's why we are working on that parking plan, so we can make sure for those larger volumes, particularly, we can make sure to get the traffic and the parking off-site so that we can maintain that.
Anything else? All right. Nicole?
My concerns are still the same as last month. I just can't stomach the fact that you're evicting people from their homes. That bothers me. It also bothers me that the Williams House isn't looked at as being a historical site that Vassar is so, so willing to tear down a piece of their historical property. I just don't understand that. It also bothers me that you'll be taking up a lot of the green space, green space that many Vassar and non-Vassar people come together. You know, whether it's the farmers' market, whether it's just people together, picnicking, walking their dogs. I really wish that you would look at one of the other sites, such as Vassar Farm. There seems to be a lot of open space there. I also feel like the hotel and the Institute seems like you're trying to put too much on a small space. So, I think that as far as I'm concerned, I would like to see more from you. And maybe I'll change my mind, and maybe I won't, but as of right now, I'm not comfortable with this plan at all. Thank you.
All right. Ben?
Well, one thing I want to say about Vassar, I don't think many people realize, they mention Alumni Weekend and Commencement. I don't think anybody realizes it's the biggest influx of people that come into the town and to the campus on those two weekends, and they handle seamlessly. We don't even feel it. We don't even know. And I think parking is a problem and getting people around, but I think Vassar is very good at accommodating people. So, I'm not too concerned about that. Displacing the people from where they live now, that's a concern. Taking up the green space, you go right down to the end of Raymond Avenue, with Hooker Avenue there on the left, it's wide open there. I don't know if you looked at that. It's not that far. And I just don't really think you'll hear more, but I don't think I like the look of that Inn. It doesn't fit in. Although, you're trying to integrate the college with the community more. It's not, that's not the way to do it, not with that Inn. Conference Center, I know they built Contemporary, but, you know, there's a lot of different style buildings on the campus, but this is off-campus. You know, you got all the Rockefeller buildings on campus. They all look the same, and they blend. But then you got these oddball buildings, what I call oddboard buildings. They, I don't know, I don't, the Inn just doesn't sit well with me, the way it is now. And I like the idea, but not the way it is now.
Thanks, sir. Peter?
Over the years, I've had a lot of positive experiences with Vassar College. I served a few terms on the town board in the 90s. Toward the later 90s, there were a lot of vacancies in the stores on College View on Raymond Avenue, and I represented the town board in the initial meetings, actually, which were held in the Alumni House. And if it weren't for Vassar's support, the Business Improvement District, I don't think ever would have been created. We have the Arthur Street Fair this weekend. I think it's gonna be the 20th anniversary. I think the first one was in 1999. Without Vassar's support, that would never happen. I, as a kid, I grew up out in Millbrook. Henry Noel McCracken was on the radio every Saturday morning with his radio show, Duchess Forever, and that's how I grew up. I serve on the County Transit Committee, and you have Representative Jeff Cosmacker, who has come up with some terrific ideas to help get, move people from Arlington into the city of Poughkeepsie, and he helped us develop a terrific program. You have people involved in education in the city of Poughkeepsie, Catherine Street Community Center, things that people just don't realize that you do. So, this is not a reflection on Vassar or its importance as a good neighbor, because you're a very good neighbor, and I, for one, appreciate it deeply. So, understand, when I, when I, when I say to you, like I've said to so many people, I mean, we have a major developer in the audience tonight. We had the same conversation with him that I'm having with you right now, and that is we don't want you to waste your time and money, because these kinds of projects are very expensive. I think I may have said that to you before. We are not satisfied, I mean, I want you, I wish, you know, people would read Section 21053 of our code called Architectural Review. And it lists out pretty clearly all the concerns that we've expressed here before. That building is gonna be a dominant factor in that neighborhood. And it seems to me you could spend a little more time, and I wouldn't be surprised if our board didn't ask you to spend a little more time looking at some alternatives. We're, I don't think, I, I think you get the idea that we are not happy, and I think I said to your architect, he's done a great job, but it's a question of context, and that location, we're not happy. If you wanted to put that same building on the campus somewhere, on the east side of Raymond Avenue, or if you wanted to put it on the farm, on Hooker Avenue, I don't think we would have any problem, because there is different context. That's the problem that we're having. It's not that we don't want you to do this. It's that design and that location, I think generally, that we're having a problem with. If you could get beyond that, I mean, I serve on half a dozen boards, and there, I mean, it's a different dynamic. I mean, you get a lot of different people, have different kinds of input, they have different motivations, they have different backgrounds and different experiences. And it's sometimes very difficult to get things done, because there's a, you know, the filtering down process. But really, we're imploring you to, so that we don't have to keep doing this over and over and over again, to come up with a different plan. I mean, I'm on a board that provides housing for homeless people, and the prospect of being engaged in an activity that would put people whose homes are at risk, you know, is a very difficult hurdle for me personally. But it, again, let's not make any mistake. This is your property, and you are entitled to do whatever you want within the law. That's your decision. How I feel personally, or how anyone else here might feel personally, is not material. So, I, you know, I think that you do have alternatives. I mean, we have, when we look at the EAF, and we have to decide whether or not to issue a negative declaration on this proposal, which means either it goes ahead or it doesn't, or if we issue a positive declaration, which will require you to go through a much more lengthy process, which, you know, I don't want to do. I don't think the board wants to do that. But we've got two serious issues here. We've got community character issue, and we have an affordable housing issue here, both of which will have to be addressed in the environmental assessment form. You know, it's not something we really have discussed in the past. Again, as a kid, growing up in Millbrook... Again, as a kid growing up in Millbrook, you know, I don't know if you're familiar with the Village, but when you go in, there's a big Village green there, and it's, it's, it's inviting, and it makes you, it just has a great feeling to it. My sister-in-law lives in Newtown in Connecticut, they have Ram's Meadow, there, it's this huge sprawling green with a pond. It's gonna be very, very difficult to replace that. I mean, I, in, I don't want to take up too much time here, in the early 90s, a friend of mine, Bob Pigott, who owns a small farm in, on Spring Road, he called me and he said, "Look, in your, as a, as a Town Board member, could you please make a connection with Vassar College? Because we heard that Dr. Ferguson is looking for ways to outreach to the community." So I contacted her office, and Bob and I met in her office, we, and with the suggestion from Bob was, "I'm a small farmer, but I know other people, organic farming is just starting to, to grab, what do you, what do you say that we use the lawn in front of the Alumni House?" And she said, "You know what? Let us, we'll think about it." So we had several more meetings, then Dr. Ferguson moved on, I moved on, everyone else moved on, but other people picked up the ball, and that's how we got to have a farmer's market in front of the Alumni House. And when I see people, I mean, it's a pain in the neck for me, because it's on Thursday nights, it's a pain in the neck for me, because I have to drive up Raymond Avenue to get here on time, so I always leave early, so I can get through there. I, I've never been to that market, I belong to the, to the Farm Project, which is another great contribution that, that Vassar makes to the community, I mean, it's a huge contribution. People I see coming in and out of there have like a, they're happy, I mean, they're, I don't know how else to describe it, I mean, they love, apparently, they love going there. I see people dragging their kids in and out of there, and everyone seems to really enjoy it. I don't see how we can, how we can sustain that, for instance, if the Inn is in, is in full swing, I don't really know how we're gonna have parking for, even though you have space for the farmer's market, I'm not sure how we're gonna accommodate parking, but that's something we'll have to address down the road. But anyway, my message to you is, I'm trying to give you good advice here, if you can come up with an alternate site where you can use the buildings as, as they've been designed, you know, I think would go a long way, and would also hasten this process for you and for everybody else involved.
Thank you, thank you for the comments. There's one thing I wanted to just mention, because we had neglected to mention it today, we've talked about it before, is, as we thought about this plan there, we're actually trying to enhance the ability for the farmer's market, you know, there's a, there's a, an access point that the Fire Department has asked for along Raymond Avenue, so we've actually lowered the curb there, which will allow those vendors to actually jump the curb at the northern end of the site where the access is, and have actually easier access to where they do the farmer's market. So we've take, we, we really are trying to support the farmer's market and the other events that go on there in the way that we have approached this design.
Just keep in mind, the weight of Murray Marx is about the relocating the project. You have ample space, we're gonna look at this, one of the things that we're gonna look at are, does the, did the applicant have alternatives to this, and we're gonna look at that very closely. And I'm just saying, this could be a very lengthy process, make it easy on yourself. I mean, just take another look at it, that's, I think it's really what we're, we're asking.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Yep, you know, my concern has been the parking and stuff. I went to the farmer's market last Thursday as well, and toward the end of the day even, and had to park fairly far down College Ave, because it was, everything's parked up, so. I know you're trying to address it with the parking, parking management plan, and the question I have is, it has to be, ferret it out a little bit more, but how, when does that plan kick in, is like, when does, what times does Vassar College come in, come into play to implement that plan? And you're, I know you're trying to do a lot of events there, and, so I'm sure it will be at that ti, at those times, but other times, there's a concern of, of just Farmer's Market Day or whatever, maybe that's part of the strategy as well, but. And as all the, as we heard tonight from, from the comments and most of the board members here, there's a concern of, of where these people from, that are currently housed in Williams are gonna go. And I know you've, we've discussed it at previous meetings as well, and you said there's adequate space in the area, but that's not what I'm hearing from, from the residents necessarily, that they have a specific place to, to go that's affordable. So I think you need to really come up with a plan for that, to show us a little more clearly, if, if you're intending to continue keeping it in this spot. And as had been alluded to, you know, what, you know, if you really don't wanna put, if you really wanna put it in this spot, why, you know, more clearly indicate why, why the other spots do not work for you, is there, you know, even though there's more land and parking available in other areas, I mean, if it was in the farmer's market area, you have all that extra south parking lot area as well, right across Hooker from it, but I know there could be traffic flow issues there as well, so, and the tie into the college, so it's, I mean, you've, you've flushed out a good plan, I appreciate that you've done the, the visualizations from tonight. You know, personally, I think the architecture's not too bad, from, I know some, some board members think it doesn't fit in with the surroundings, but I, when I saw the visions, you know, the pictures from, with the trees in front and everything else, it felt more comfortable to me than just the plain building itself, so it felt like it fit in a little better than I had seen in previous meetings. I think someone mentioned, you know, the park, the surface parking there might look too, too big along the street, I don't know what landscaping is on the plan, I'd have to go back and look at that, if there's, if the parking is screened in some way.
It is, and we'll plan to show you some pictures of that the next time around. It's actually fairly elevated, as well as have trees around it, so that it will be fairly well-hidden from the street, even from the sidewalk, it's, it's elevated relative to the sidewalk, correct?
All right, I think we've got a, you've got a, Carl, we just want to-
Excuse me, just want to follow up, make, I'm gonna make two points here. One is, how we personally feel about the design is not material here. We have an ordinance called Architectural Review, and the, the design has to be consistent with the terms of that article, 21053. I might love the building, I might hate it, it's immaterial. We have an ordinance, and that ordinance has to be complied with. The other thing is about the view shed, the photographs that you showed us are great when the, the trees aren't full, when they're fully leafed out. Those are all deciduous trees, for six months out of the year, let's not forget, that they're gonna be, those buildings are gonna be in full view, they're not gonna be, not gonna be shaded, no pun intended, by a fully leafed out deciduous tree.
Okay, thank you, Peter. All right, I think you've heard all our comments for tonight, and move forward.
I move that the Planning Board defer action on this application, subject to the following. Respond to comments of the Planning Board and those received from Town Departments and Agencies. Said responses to be reviewed by the Planning Department as to adequacy and completeness included but not limited to the following, 1 through 13.
And, let's see, make sure that includes, yep, comments at the meeting tonight. Moved and seconded, called question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. And perhaps he can set up another workshop or something with the, with the department, and we'll try to figure out where to go from, from here.
Okay, thank you.
Next up on the agenda is Fox Run at Fulton, AKA Fair, also known as Fairview Comments. It's been at applicant's request to be removed from the application tonight, but it is a public hearing, so I move that we open the public hearing for this project.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Is there anyone in the audience wishes to make any comments tonight on the Fox Run at Fulton Apartments? Seeing that, I move, I move we adjourn the public hearing to, when do they?
October.
Move to, adjourn to October 17th, 2019.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn, called, in question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Next up is Eastdale Village. Formerly known as McDonald Heights Town Center. Welcome back, guys.
Good evening.
Long time no see. This is getting to be a habit.
Yes.
Our new landscape plan?
Oh, that's a- That was nice.
Sorry, I did, I did lend my computer to Mr. Caruso there, but, um-
Yeah, thank you again for doing that.
Sure.
Allowed him to present that.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, Jeff Kane with, with Kurtoff Properties, representing the Eastdale Village.
Eric Schlobum, Inside Engineering Surveying and Landscape Architecture.
So, Mr. Chairman, tonight there, we're in front of you for both a revised subdivision and a minor site plan amendment on the site, so I'd like to first, I think, walk through the subdivision to explain what we're doing on the site, if that's, I find that the most, the most helpful. And can you see, or do we need to do something? Let's see, am I getting, is that coming through at all?
Not currently, yeah.
Not yet.
It popped up before, but, um.
So the overall site, we're really looking to re-subdivide two of the lots, Lot 10W and 13W, and I, and I highlighted them here on the site to show, these are lots in the, in the, really, the, the southwest corner of the site, the corner of the site closest to, closest to Poughkeepsie, instead of Pleasant Valley, along, along 44.
You ready to go into the food?
So I'm gonna talk first about Lot, Lot 10W, which is the one that's being divided into three lots, Lot, divided into 10WA, 10WB, 10WC. So Lot 10W originally was 0.944 acres. Lot 10WA, which is the, the one here in the, in the, in the pink, which is furthest back into the site, will contain building, what we've called Building E5, we've divided these buildings into, into separate buildings. It'll be a new 2.42 acre lot, and the, and the design will contain a two-story mixed-use building with a full basement, outdoor dining, again, which you've reviewed at the last, last month, and two one-bedroom apartments above. Total of a 1,564 square foot footprint on the lot, and 4,692 total square feet. The next building adjacent to that, and again, these buildings are attached, is building, is Lot 10WB, a B, a 2.87 acre lot, and this Building E4, three-story mixed-use building, a full basement and five two-bedroom townhouse style, so stacked apartments above the, above the commercial area, footprint of 3,319 square feet, and a total of 13,276 square feet. So in designing the, in dividing this lot, we chose to put the property line, obviously for the, for the buildings E4 and E5, be a party wall, so the lot line goes between the two buildings, and then the next lot line goes in the breezeway between the two buildings that have, have some separation. So that leaves then at the, at the corner of Eastdale Avenue and Route 44, Buildings E1, E2, and E3 are all located on Lot 10WC, a .415 acre lot. And then across Eastdale Avenue, again, Eastdale Avenue runs perpendicular to 44 back into the site, so across Eastdale Avenue, we have what was Lot 13, and we now have divided that into three lots, the, the front one being Lot 13WA, a .313 acre lot, two buildings on it, the front building, the corner building, Building A1, two-story mixed-use building, full basement, and a 300 square foot exterior loading, call it a loading dock, it's not really a dock, because it's not elevated, but it is a loading building for loading into that, into that, that particular use. One one-bedroom and two one-bedroom apartments above, total square foot of 2,943 footprint, and 8,229 total square feet for those buildings on that, on that lot. And then the rear lot, again, the configuration of the lot line was to divide down the middle of the breezeway between the two, the two buildings, so the remainder of that lot, the .914 acres remaining of Lot 13W goes into Lot 13WB, and contains four buildings, A3, A4, A5, and A6, and they are two-story mixed-use buildings with a variety of, of commercial on the first floor and residential uses above. And again, that's, as, as the design currently stands there. Overall, commercial square footage with, with the subdivision remains the same. The total residential square footage on the site decreases by a total of 326 square feet. We also, and as part of the site plan, we're expanding the community center, and I can talk about that, we're increasing that, that square footage, looking to increase that by 1,160 square feet. So the total building area really increases by 834 square feet. With the subdivision, with the site plan, the density covenants remain in place on the sites, the overall density is, is assigned per lot, and we've provided an update to that density covenant in the package for review. All the reciprocal easements for parking, water, sewer, drainage access, vehicular access, pedestrian access, those still impact and control all of the lots, and none of those reciprocal easements are impacted by the, by the subdivision. We do have to tweak one of the sewer easements, and I can talk about that in just a second. The subdivision, and this re-subdivision of Lots 10W and 13W do not impact any of the setbacks to the, kind of the outer bounds, the, the adjacent residential uses around Eastdale Village. These subdivision lines really only impact setbacks for the interior lots as, as designed. And we've not changed any of the parking with the subdivision or minor site plan tweaks, the parking counts have remained both what's, what's proposed and what's, what's been, what we expect a generation to be, both remain the same. So along with the subdivision, the two other minor modifications, we have, this is the community center located in the center of the, of the, of the site, and you have, we have our, our green, again, it's, which, which is in the middle of, of all the residential uses, we have our center of green, the male Leeson building on one end, and our community center anchoring the other end of the green. And so what we did with the community center is we really shoved it to the right, shoved it to the, to the, to the, to the front here, and created a 1,160 more square feet in the community center, and created larger deck around the pool, because our experience in our, in our conversations is that we needed more room for, for chairs and tables exterior around the pool. So we've held the size of the green, what we really did is just, is just really kind of shoved all of these uses up, shrunk this little triangle of, of, of space, and replaced that with what we think is more usable internal recreation area. Unfortunately, this, because it's fenced around the pool, doesn't count when, when you're counting what is usable recreational space on the site for your code, but it is absolutely usable, usable recreational space, so we have, we've, we've changed it around, but we think it's- we think it's going to provide good use to the, to the, to the residents and, and the town. And then the other minor change is to building, what we call Building D4, the other green, the small green around the bandstand, again, Eastdale Avenue running top and bottom across the site here, the green, we had four 500-square-foot commercial cottages. We've had a user identify who wanted a little bigger use, so we have 704 square feet in this proposed user now along the, along the green, and so that just, again, provided some minor tweaks on the, on the site here. But we've been able to work through the water, the sewer, drainage, again, as I mentioned, parking with some minor tweaks there. An amended SWIP has been, been provided to the, to the, by Eric's office, to the, to the town engineer, and we, as this building extended out, we ended up with one foot into the easement we had offered to the town for, for the, for the sewer, and spoke with, and spoke with town engineer's office, can we, again, still provide a 30-foot easement to the town for the, for the sewer, but just offset it from the pipes, there's at least, at least 20 foot on, on, or at least 10 feet on each side of the, of the pipe, and that was acceptable to the town, so we have, we're asking for a modification of the sewer easement to accommodate this, this building D4. All right? So, yeah, I didn't talk about signage, but let me do that separately, so.
Okay.
That's a lot of stuff there. Thanks.
All right, Eric?
Sure. The, this is the first time that there's been an additional subdivision to this development, proposed for this development since the initial subdivision, so, but it appears to, to work as Jeff has described, so there is a resolution, there is a resolution to determine that the changes, both with the subdivision and the site plan, are conforming to the previous environmental reviews, because they do, and to go through the couple of steps to approve preliminary subdivision and a final subdivision, if you, if you'd like to do both tonight. The site plan changes, as Jeff described, appear to be conformed to the overall program for the development. There's a couple of minor questions in there, I think Jeff answered some of them tonight, but there's also language in there for you to go through the steps of approving, of providing a site plan approval as well. And then lastly, there was a commercial sign package presented to the board. What I, we've just figured out was that, yes, there is a, the signage section for the McDonald Heights District does require a comprehensive, a coordinated sign package. It doesn't provide for any action, however, the board during its review of the original development anticipated, you guys did the right thing, you anticipated future architectural review on a, on a broad basis, and at that time, you had the applicant put onto the site plan a note, Note Number 25, which requires prior to the, prior to the issuance of the first building signage in the development, that the applicant should submit a coordinated sign package for review and for approval by the planning board. So, that's a response to, to the planning board's foresight in ensuring a coordinated signage for the development, and that, that appears to be the applicant's intent is not to provide something that would supersede architectural review by the planning board on specific signage, nor would it supersede the signed permit review by the zoning administrator, but it would provide some guidelines for future development of the commercial buildings in the development.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. It sounds like you didn't have any issues with the sewer change?
No.
All right. Fourth. This is a public hearing, so I moved, we opened the subdivision and site plan in public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. There was no signups, but is there anyone in the audience wish to comment on this application? Seeing none, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. Let's go around the board for comments on this, starting with Peter.
I'm a volunteer. This is a very complex proposition, and when we get modifications like this, it really takes a lot of time to sit and go through them, to get, to grasp what you're doing. I don't think we got, the maps we get in the first place are, you know, I have to use a magnifying glass to read them, which is okay, but if you use, you know, color coding like you have on the, on the presentation there, if, I mean, I don't know if that's possible, if you have the, the capability of doing that?
Clearly, I do.
Yeah.
Yes. I, I don't, yeah, right, and that's, that's a great comment, Mr. Shelley. I don't normally submit that as part of the package, but we can certainly try to make clear as, in the part of the smittle. Yeah, I got it.
I, I am reluctant to make a decision on, on, on something that I don't understand, and if you could help us understand a little bit better, give us a little bit better grasp of what and where you're doing it, we'll go along the way to moving the process forward on a timely basis. Other question is, you are a tenant of the Fourth Ward Sewer? Are you, are you a tenant of the Fourth Ward Sewer?
Yes, the project is a tenant of the Fourth Ward Sewer.
When you do these little, the subdivisions that you're doing, are you, are you, do you have to deed the, the tenancy?
I, I'll certainly defer to the, to the, to the town attorney, but my, my understanding is the tenancy agreement is to the property as was, as it was originally part of the agreement, and that, that agreement included all of Eastdale Village on both sides of 44, so that the tenancy agreement extends those lots even when there is further subdivision. That's, that's been...
So, the owner, the owner of each of these lots that you're subdividing is the same as the owner of the, the initial lot?
I guess, the, the ownership of the lots has and will change, just because you end up with different LLCs for, for financing purposes, so the ownership will change, but the tenancy rights travel with the property, not with the ownership group. That's my, again, lay understanding of how that, how that works.
If you have an opportunity to talk to Jim Nelson, if you would just ask him and let us know next time we talk?
Sure.
Just to be on the safe side. Thank you.
A good idea to help us point, point in the direction of where to be looking for, whether it's color-coded or some other way, a circle on the map or something that could help, help guide us to where the changes are.
Sure.
Ben?
Good to see that all these changes don't change anything, so I'm okay.
Thank you.
Nicole?
Lisa, you had mentioned something about a grease trap.
Right, so, I was actually, it's actually a site plan ago, so it's not referenced to this particular application, I was one plan behind, and the issue with the grease trap was, one of the, a grease trap is now proposed to cover more than one lot, so we will have in place an amendment before that particular site plan gets signed as one of the agreements, an agreement, a property, a joint, sort of a joint grease trap agreement, but that will be taken care of as part of the prior site, one of the conditions of the prior site plan approval.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I think the issue, and just, as, as we've talked about it, the, the town intent is to take over the, the sewer lines on the site here, but the town doesn't want to take over the grease traps, and so that's the, that's the agreement we have to have in place, it's just crystal clear that it's the, it's the lot owners, users who, who maintain those grease traps and the, and the lines that go in and directly in and out of the grease traps, and that's, it makes all the sense in the world, it's just not always easy to write, that's the...
Okay. Bob, anything?
I just wanted to also, you know, jump on Peter's comment about the identifying the changes, because I find it very difficult to, to read that print, but the question I have is, do we have the ability to create color copies? Or do you provide color copies to the whole board and the...
Happy to get you color copies, that's, right, that's, that's, that's easy enough for me to do.
Okay, I don't know how many, how many do we need, a lot of...
We also do this, and, and again, we're dependent on how, you know, how individual people use it, you know, we, PDFs that you can see on the screen as well and, and blow up to whatever size you need, I mean, we can, you know, I, I'm happy to create that stuff as we submit to, to answer specific questions about, hey, how does this, how does this really work, or, and that, that's, that's...
I'd be very happy with PDFs.
Yeah.
Yeah, PDFs sound like paper, I don't have to carry them.
They give us hard copies with their smittles, so certainly we could get a color key or something to the changes, that might be helpful, all right?
Let's get both. We can get the, you know, the hard copy and PDF.
Right. Yep, it's a large project, a lot, lot of details to look at, so, that's, sounds like a good suggestion.
And I, I guess, the only, one of the reasons why, and just, just, just as my, my excuse, we don't do this on the copies that are this, to be signed, because we don't, this is not what you want in your, in your eventually signed copy, these are just exhibits that we do after, you get those nice black and white ones that we have to submit, so, we will, you'll, you won't see this on the, in the, in the, in the stapled packet of plans, but it would just be an extra, an extra figure, I think is maybe the right way to, to help explain the work, so, okay.
Some extra sheet or something.
Could accompany your letter, usually you do a cover letter that explains what the changes are, just so it's a little easier to identify where to look.
Sure.
That would be great.
All right. My comment is, I guess, you're breaking these up for financial reasons as well, just based on the previous plan you had done. Did you have any further architecture metted out yet for these buildings?
We don't, I mean, I, I, I want to talk about signage a little bit, and maybe is this the right time to do that, and, because that's in, that's in the, it comes in the context of architecture, and that's, but I can, I'd like to do that before you...
Yep, let's move on to that then.
Okay, so, the, I think as, as Eric was pointing out, there's a requirement for that the planning board review and approve a comprehensive signage plan before we have our first building signage, and it's something that we've been doing with, with the tenants and users on the site anyway, because we, as the, as the owner and as what's, what's described as the site operator, want to maintain some control over the signage so that it, it works to the benefit of, of the entire center and what we're really trying to create there. The, the idea of a site operator is a position created in the reciprocal easement document, which I know the, the board has seen and the planning board attorney has, has reviewed, so that's a filed document which, which defines a site operator, and Kurtzoff Properties is the, is the site operator, and Cannon will remain the site operator until such time as we don't want to be the site operator anymore, we can't be kicked out, we're not Boris Johnson, right, so we, we can retain, retain that control. Again, we, it's our, in our interest to, to retain that, that control to, to keep the, to keep the value of the, of the entire project. So, we've been describing the, our view of the signage constraints on the site and some, some minimum architectural values that we think the signage must have, and we want you to share in that vision for signage here. Now, I will, it's, it's pretty clear, if you've read through this, that some of these standards exceed the minimum, or exceed the maximum limits that, that the town code currently, currently allows. This is, this is not meant to supplant what the town requires, but it is meant to provide, we think, some guidance of what, what will work in, in the commercial setting on the site here. So, we, we do want your support for this, because some of the tenants will, in fact, look for signage as they do architectural review, consistent with the standards that we have here, and they will look for, for zoning variances consistent with the, with some of what we've proposed here. So, we want to, we want to have that conversation and, and understanding with you, again, not that we're expecting you to, to, to approve signs sight unseen, but we want to have the conversation so that, that there's, again, there's a context for all the signage as, as we, again, develop the, continue to develop the, the architecture. So, what we've, what we've talked about in the, in the signage plans are the, kind of the general guidelines, and I'll, I can read through this pretty, pretty quickly, but the overall, the commercial signage standards, that the signage is compatible with the overall character of Eastdale Village, and that's, and, you know, who's, who's deciding it's, it's, it's compatible with the overall character, again, as a site operator, we play that role, and we, we would think that the town planning board would, would as well, but it's compatible with the character and the historic nature of the building architecture, because we are looking for historic building architecture on the site here. But the signs are installed in a manner that doesn't negatively impact the important architectural historic features, doesn't impact the pedestrian enjoyment to the sidewalks, plazas, greens, and other features. We don't want any of the signage to kind of overwhelm any of the public spaces we're working hard to create on the site here. We're requiring that the size, material, color, and typeface of the signage must be reviewed for approval by the site operator, again, that's, that's us, as defined in the reciprocal easement document, must be reviewed and for conformance to the signage standards, and we have to provide written approval to any of the, any of the tenants or other, other business owners on the site before they, before they proceed. And we want the signs to vary building to building, to reflect the individual character of the tenant, but I've seen, I've seen strip malls where they require every sign to be the same, and, hey, that might work for a strip mall, not what we're going for here. We want individuality of the signs, we want them to look different, because if you look down at a historic community in the Northeast, you're going to see a great variety of, of signs, and we think that's important and appropriate in a, in a setting like Eastdale Village. The signage obviously has to be in scale of the building, can't be too big, can't be too small, got to be scenes, got to be useful. Use quality materials and construction techniques, the signs need to hold up over time, we don't want, we don't want faded awnings hanging out on, on the site, we want to make sure that what they've, what they've built and installed will, 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 will stand the test of, of time. The signs, we don't want them to cover or obscure significant architectural features or visibility through the windows, so we spend a lot of time on architecture, right, and they have some feature, well, okay, somebody puts a sign over it, what do you do? Well, we want to, we have to, we have to control those things, because over time, businesses change, ownership changes, and we need to, again, have the opportunity and the, the right to, to, to protect those features that we've spent time working on. Signs and awnings can't have an overwhelming amount of lettering, no fluttering, moving or flashing signage is allowed, and the signs have to be compatible with the graphics colors and style of the building and the neighbors, so compatibility, but again, not the, not the same sign. And along the main streets, the architecture, again, this is part of where the architecture and signage come together, the architecture has to be developed to incorporate signage into a sign band to provide a consistent scale and size. So, you can see in these buildings, again, this is, this is the conceptual architecture, this isn't the final architecture, each building is being, being individually developed right now, but you can see kind of the sign band running above the, above the awning level. That sign band is where we think it would be important to have, to have that kind of consistent signage location along these buildings, and it might, again, it, it might and should vary in height from, from building to building as they're developed, but that's the idea, is you have a sign band in the building that's appropriate from an architectural perspective of where that, 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 that sign could and should be. As you wrap around the edge of the buildings, that sign band might be, it might be in a different, different location, may, may not be a sign band on an, on an, on an end unit or in the, in the back, but the, again, we, it's that, it's that front door that we want to make sure we, we've got some consistency of that, that sign band. What kind of signs are we, are we allowing? Again, there's, there's, this runs quite a gamut of signs, everything from carved, painted, applied letters on the, on the, on a wall, dimensional letters attached to the building within the sign band, awnings can have signage printed on it or affixed on it, has to be proportional. You can have vinyl films or graphics to the exterior or interior storefront and entry doors, again, graphics have to be proportional to the glass, no more than 25% of the glazing covered by the signage, again, you don't want the situation where you have, we've, again, worked hard to have a lot of glazing... a lot of glazing onto the main street, you cover that with all, with signage. It doesn't work, so we've got to make sure we control that. And projecting signs unparalleled to the building face, so as you're walking down the street, there's a projecting sign, a small projecting sign, identifying what's within, those are allowed as well. Again, you have to make sure that they don't hang into the path of pedestrians and become a nuisance, but they are allowed if designed appropriately. Lighting, again, the signs can and should be lighted, but if they're lit, they need to be on a timer or a photo cell. We encourage goosnecks or something else hanging down from the building facade itself to provide a wash of illumination. You can avoid the hot spots. Soft flow, low level of illumination, no more than three foot on center for lighting fixtures. Don't want to have a whole bunch in a row, no more than six fixtures in a row. Internally illuminated or shiny awnings are prohibited. Reverse channel lettering, that's lit from behind, the halo lettering, those are permitted. Neon and exposed lighting surfaces not allowed. Blinking signage is not allowed. Reader boards not allowed. And again, I go through this because we want the planning board to, again, to adopt our vision here and be supportive of what we're doing. If there's, if I go through this, and then there are particular items that you have issue with, you know, I'd certainly like the opportunity to discuss those with you. We talk about sizes and the relationship of the building to the maximum signage. And we've, in our standards, proposed one and a half square feet for each linear foot of building. And that's the building width on a named road. So what is a named road? Up to a maximum of 150 square feet per elevation. So if you look at the, I'll go to the main street here. So the named roads here, 44 is obviously Dutchess Turnpike, that's named. Eastdale Avenue is named. The street across the back is Founder's Way, that's named. So those all count towards, right here, those all count towards building linear footage, but this is a parking lot in back here. It doesn't count. You don't get extra square footage because you have a parking lot behind the building. Those don't count. So that's the intent of our language there. Signage limits are specific to an elevation. You can't transfer from one elevation to another because I want a bigger sign out here. No, if you've got 50 feet here and 100 feet there, that's got to be on that elevation. Multi-story building, if you've got two commercial tenants, well, how do you break that allowable signage up? And shouldn't each tenant have some signage? So we've provided a 50% increase in signage. If you've got a multi-story building with two tenants, as long as each tenant gets at least 25% of the building signage. Again, that's to allow that, to allow each to have the appropriate amount of signage. Door and window glazing is in excess of the building mounted signage, doesn't count against your 150 square feet limit. And A-frame signs, sidewalk board signs are permitted, but small, five square feet, again, low on the sidewalk. We don't want big signage boards on the side blocking pedestrian ways. So those are, again, those are our standards, and again, we hope they meet your vision of what we're trying to accomplish here.
Hey, Jeff, since you mentioned sidewalk signage, it occurred to me that in the town sidewalk standards are only applicable to signs on public roadways. So I wondered if you had considered, some of those standards had to do with maintaining a location for the sidewalk boards that would not obstruct pedestrian traffic. And I wondered if you'd given any thought to guidelines regarding the location of those types of signs?
Yeah, so generally, yes, and our signage standards, the general comment is it can't impact pedestrian enjoyment of the sidewalks, plazas, greens, or other important features. So if it's a problem, we have the enforcement, right, to whatever, we're not the police on the other side here, but we have the ability to work with our tenants, to work with the other owners on the site to make sure those boards aren't in the middle of a pedestrian way.
Can we comment?
Yep.
Have you provided a copy of this to the ZBA?
I have not.
Might not be a bad idea. I mean, you know, you mentioned here about the limits, the limits, some of your limits exceed town limits. I don't think we want, we want to get into conflict with the zoning board of appeals in terms of any recommendation that we make that is not in conformance with the zoning standards.
Well, I'm not sure, the ZBA can't issue advisory opinions, and their jurisdiction would be quasi, its jurisdiction is judicial. I would recommend that we give this to the zoning administrator in the first instance and let him take a look at it, and then from there we can decide where to go.
Work on it together with them.
At least.
Right, because among other things, I noticed that there's requirements in the zoning that wall signs not be more than 15 square feet. And obviously, what you're doing exceeds that.
Right, and 15 square feet doesn't work.
Right. And in certain, but we should, I think before this board does anything with it, they should have an opinion, perhaps, from the zoning administrator about that.
I think you've done a terrific job. I mean, actually, you're scaring me a little bit here. But I mean, it's, the detail is great. I mean, you've covered all the bases, but in that one area where, you know, we potentially could be in conflict with the ZBA, and I think that's something that we should probably address in advance rather than have to...
Right, and I understand. And help me here for a second, because clearly, if and when the zoning administrator looks at this, they're going to say, well, none of this complies with the code right now. And that's just the truth. It doesn't. They are, the signage, the maximums that we're talking about here exceed what the zoning code talks about. But I also think that the code wasn't sufficiently developed to address signage for a town center.
Right.
I think that just wasn't, just wasn't, wasn't fully, because this is, look, this is the first one that's happened here, and I think we are breaking ground. So my only comment that I wanted to add is that it's been my experience that this board has in the past, not infrequently, provided recommendations to the ZBA for variances. And I've seen that happen fairly often, and that's so, it's, again, not that I'm expecting that there's a blanket acceptance that you're going to say, this is good tonight, Jeff, go home. But I, when there is a sign brought in, and it may exceed the signage variance, that you could use this in your, again, to the extent that you're comfortable with this or some modification of this, use this in providing, at least the planning board's perspective on a sign that may exceed what the zoning code allows. And that's, I think, how this ultimately plays out.
Nobody knows better than you. Time is money. And all I'm saying here is, look before you leave.
Alternately, one option is, rather than make a recommendation for each sign to the zoning board, and keeping in mind that the board has an obligation, if not to grant repeated variances where the legislative change is more appropriate, it may be that after looking at this, this board wants to make a recommendation to the town board that certain changes be made, perhaps in a McDonald Heights sign code be made separately or a town center sign code, to make a global change, rather than burdening the ZBA with 15 variances for the same type of signage.
That is what we did with the Hudson Heritage Project, if you recall. They had included some ideas about signage in some of their materials, and we said, well, you know, recognizing that in that case there isn't any specific zoning language for signs, that something will need to be crafted. And so that's something that's still to come. They haven't proposed anything yet, but they're not nearly as far along as you are, obviously. But I think that would make sense, something like that.
Yeah, I think that'd be great, because I was thinking along the same lines, because reading this, a lot of this makes sense for a walkable downtown village, and that's what you're trying to create. And so I think having something that you can negotiate out and not have so many variances would be great.
Yeah, and not just ZBA. You don't want me here 15 times talking about a sign.
Right.
It's a...
As ZBA, I agree with that, as the ZBA attorney who would be listening to the 15 sign applications. But also, there's no immediate deadline to have the planning board approve a sign package, is there? So if we had the time to address this and take, make a recommendation?
I, we would expect our first sign to come to you within the next 45 days, because they're going to want to, but it'll need to be, you know, in place, you know, 45 days after that kind of timeframe is, I think, because the first sign will come with the medical office building, and that's the...
That's kind of a separate.
Well, it is, and, but it's, again, it's the comprehensive sign package is why, you know, that was the kind of the driver for this today. So other than that, you're right, it's not, it's not hot and heavy, and I would look for some approval. So maybe that's the outlier, and isn't the driver for this.
Perhaps, but depending on how far behind the other ones are, you're thinking, so...
Right, right, so, yeah.
But I think it is a great idea to develop something.
I think it would be very helpful if we could get some standards that the entire town could live with, the town board, planning board, and zoning board, rather than individual variances.
Yep.
Great.
Makes sense. And the town board is the only entity that has the authority to do that, so it wouldn't hurt to... We can make a recommendation, but they have to do the vote. Anyone else have any comments on the sign? Further? All right, I guess we're...
I move that the action contemplated by the Eastdale Village subdivision application dated August 26, 2019, was considered in the seeker review for the McDonald Heights Town Center project as a Type 1 action inclusive of a concurrent seeker and subdivision public hearing, and that the proposed Eastdale Village major subdivision is consistent with seeker finding statement for the McDonald Heights Town Center as adapted March 15, 2018, and that the planning board finds that the proposed modifications to the area yard and bulk provisions of 210-27 are consistent with the goals and objectives of the town plan and Chapter 210 pertaining to intent and purposes of the MHC district pursuant to 210-27I10, and that the planning board grant conditional preliminary major subdivision approval for the Eastdale Village, AKA McDonald Heights Town Center project subject to the following. Respond to the comments of all reviewing departments, agencies, and said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness, inclusive but not limited to the following 1 through 10D.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero.
I move that the planning board waive a public hearing on final major subdivision approval and grant conditional final major subdivision approval subject to the preceding conditions of preliminary major subdivision approval and the following, 1 revised preliminary subdivision plat to final subdivision plat and any other revisions as required for the plat to be suitable for filing with the Dutchess County Clerk.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero.
I move that the planning board find that the action contemplated by the Eastdale Village Fifth amended site plan revised through August 26, 2019 by correspondence and attachments dated August 26, 2019 is consistent with seeker finding statement with the McDonald Heights Town Center as adapted March 15, 2018. And I move that the planning board grant conditional amended site plan approval for the Eastdale Village Fifth amended site plan subject to the following. Respond to the comments of all reviewing departments and agencies and said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness included but not limited to the following 11 through 21.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. You're good to go for tonight.
Thank you.
Looks like construction's moving along out there all right.
I'm sorry, a second.
Looks like construction's moving along pretty well out there.
It's moving along really well, right. This is, it's, right, we're starting to come together now, so paving soon, it'll look all different. Thank you.
Great. Five minutes, right, maybe. Let's do, we have one more public hearing. Yep. Next up, Valley Christian Church, seeker review on site plan hearing for proposed change of use from a recreation facility to a religious place of worship, including alteration in addition to an existing building and repair and expansion of existing parking. It's on 657 Shif Road, it's on listed action, Valley Christian Church is the owner. Welcome back, guys.
Hi, good evening. We have a model to present on the screen as well.
Yep.
She heard it. Good evening. We're here to present to you the Valley Christian Church. We have shown you the model before, but we have further developed it. We incorporated a generic landscaping in the model to show you, as well as develop the interior portion of the building, which we'd like to take you through as well.
Okay, great.
Can you, yeah, can you see that or...
The board can see it.
Well, we can see it here, so...
Audience can see it on the monitors.
So we're good, all the monitors are up, so...
Okay, so we're all good?
So we're good, everyone can see it.
So we're going to start from the Shif Road entrance here, and we are going to, we are proposing to plant some street trees along the 30-foot front yard buffer zone. And we are also providing some landscape screening in front of the mechanical units and the existing electrical transformer as well. So we, what you're seeing here in the front parking lot is the existing parking spacings that we would like to reutilize, with the addition of some parallel parking spaces up front there. Moving around the back entry, you can see we've provided some trees in the overall parking lot landscape, as well as in the front of the building as well. You could see we have the children's play area that's accessed from the inside of the building, towards that portion of the building. We looked at the location of the bicycle rack, and there wasn't any suitable location in the front, so we thought this portion in the back area would lend itself to the location of the bicycle rack. So this is the rear drop-off and the addition, entry addition. And then we'd like you to briefly take you through the interior of the building. So when you first enter in here, this is the cafe lounge area with a, has a little kitchenette and a little coffee bar. Just behind that are the bathrooms, men's, women's, and the family room, restroom. And then continuing down the hall would be the, to the right here... And then continuing down the hall would be the, to the right here, to the, uh, church offices. Then to the right is the pastor, pastor's office. And we are, um, providing new windows in these spaces to allow natural light in these particular areas.
Okay.
And then just outside this office area is the entry hallway for the, uh, kids' check-in. So we have a little kiosk center here off to the right, um, for the, for the check-in before the services. And then the children's room is down the hallway here. We have a nursery room located on this side. And then, um, another room that's divided by, uh, dividing partition that would be able to use the both space same time as well as, uh, individually separate them for different uses. And then we have a larger open area for the kids as well. So going on to the other half of the building would be the auditorium side. And to the far end there is the entrance towards the rear of the parking lot. Uh, there'll be an accessible ramp connecting the two levels. And this is a area just outside the auditorium that's gonna be used for, um, gathering and, um, just overall communal space and overflow, um, that could be utilized. And then going into the main auditorium, this is the, uh, approximately five hundred and eighty-seat auditorium. And then you could see on either corner, angled corner there, to the top left would be the audiovisual, uh, booth, and to the right there would be the, uh, crying room, which would both have vision panels to view into the auditorium. And then we'll quickly, uh, show you the back-of-house spaces, the green room and the audiovisual room on the side up here. And then down this hallway, we have a conference room. And then we have, um, bathrooms to service that space, and then we have, um, a green room on the other side. So it's kind of a little tour of the interior spaces and the layout of the building. We wanted to get you, uh, a sense and a feel for it as well as to, um, show the public a visual portion of it.
Yeah, it's a great way to do a walkthrough, thanks. Looks a lot different than when it was a gym and a time of gymnastics.
So, um, now we'd like to just go through some of the, um, the site plan, uh, technical aspects and the, the issues at hand. And I'll, uh, turn it over to, uh, Christian Pajee from Pajee Engineers.
Good evening. Um, I know everybody's anxious to get out of here, you've been here for a while and it's a long agenda, so I'll try to be brief. What I really wanted to touch on was, um, the seeker-related comments in the, the planning department recommendation, um, and then some of the, uh, the more significant other technical comments. Mainly the seeker comments, because I do believe that, um, they have all really been substantially addressed. I just think a conversation will help, uh, to clarify some of the outstanding issues. Um, I'll skip over the first one related to sewer, because I think that's really the, the biggest issue here, and it's gonna be the, the more lengthy conversation. Number two, the, uh, the request to, from OPRHP for a response, um, that was really, we do have a two thousand seventeen letter, um, that they indicated there was no impact. And the idea, we were just requesting an updated letter just so we had a, an updated date on it. Um, the, the original two thousand seventeen determination was based on a full build-out of the site, and I have a, uh, sketch plan that was submitted by LRC in two thousand seventeen that that was based on.
Showing footprint.
So really getting the response from OPRHP should just be a, a, a processing paperwork, uh, exercise, and it's just been difficult to get a response from them, but we will keep trying. But I wanted to at least submit that to show that what, that we're talking about the same order of magnitude as far as, uh, proposed work, so there should be no change in their determination as far as impact. Number three, peak site generated traffic volumes. We submitted a letter just based on the typical ITE, um, uh, peak generation values. We were, based on that, those values, we were estimating a hundred and fifty-four, uh, trips during the AM peak on a Sunday. The weekday trips were, during peak hours, were around ten or less. The EAF workbook indicates that anything that generates less than a hundred trips during the peak hour would be considered, generally considered, uh, to have no significant impact. The peak hour during the week is, uh, we were showing during, is less than ten. I don't believe there is a peak hour for, for Sundays, for, for, um, for weekends. Um, at, but just to put it in perspective, the, for a shopping center, say, the Sunday morning peak hour traffic is about half of what would be considered during the weekday. So there's, there's definitely, um, some, some give and take there. So we do believe that the fact that the peak traffic for this site, um, the fact that it's happening on a weekend indicates that there will be no, uh, significant impact on, on the road. And additionally, um, we received the DOT, New York State DOT response, saying that they don't expect any, uh, significant impacts on, on Route nine. And I know that was, um, a concern at the, um, the intersection there at the, at the mall. So their response was that there was gonna be no significant impact, um, and we, we agree with that.
So your main, your main, uh, peak times for services and stuff are Sunday mornings, or do?
Yeah, the, the, the peak time really is just during Sunday mornings. During the week, it's gonna be limited to, um, uh, just a, a few staff, uh, going in and out of the site. Again, less than, less than ten trips during peak hour.
And generally, the mall opens late on Sunday as well, so.
Exactly.
And have you taken any credit for, uh, anybody walk, you know, hopefully you get some people walking from the surrounding neighborhood, so.
There aren't really any sidewalks there, so.
There aren't, but, there aren't sidewalks, but there's a lot of, that's why we talked about a bike rack as well, so.
Absolutely, yep. Great. And, let's see, number four was relate, number four was related to site distance. Um, we based our site distance measure, uh, evaluation on current ASHTO standards. The town has their own standards under the subdivision code section. Um, they just indicate a two hundred and seventy-five foot required site distance in the right and left direction. We, the minimum site distance that we show is two hundred and seventy feet, and that's taken from a point that's eighteen feet off of the, the road center line or the, the white line, where the town, uh, requires you to take that, uh, distance, uh, take that measurement for, uh, requires that measure, measurement to be twelve feet, I believe. So there's just a difference in, in calculations. I really do believe that we are, um, close or, or not hitting the town standard. Um, the ASHTO standard is just a little bit more, more stringent. We can work through that with a town engineer. But the direction which we're not hitting that standard is looking, uh, to the south out of the, um,
Right.
right, out of, out of the, uh, the access. And the reason for not hitting the ASHTO standard is just the site, uh, topography. The, as you turn, go south on Sheaf Road, it, the topography goes down, and, uh, there's no obstructions in the way, it's really just a matter of the topography. So that's, that's your limiting factor there, so there's no way, uh, uh, site distance easements or anything like that, or, or improvements won't, won't increase your site distance.
It bends to the right there, but, and there's, there's a bit of foliage, foliage there now as well, but you're, you're doing some landscape updates.
Exactly.
Which will not have overgrown weeds there, so.
Yeah, the, the existing, uh, shrubs and just brush really that has grown up in front of the site will be removed, so there will be a clear, clear line of sight. And additionally, that is more of a concern, that direction, if you're pulling out onto Sheaf Road and going north. And the only site that is north, um, though there's no developed site north, Forsens will eventually be there. Um, the, across the street, the Porco property, there's, um, potential for development there, but nothing is even before the planning board yet. But the point being that the majority of the traffic will be turning, uh, going, turning to go south onto Sheaf Road.
Makes sense.
And that covers A and B now.
Can you explain that to do?
So if to, if you were to turn north onto Sheaf Road, the only people that would do that would be someone that's going towards, either going back to the Forsens project, um, or going into maybe Porco's project, because the acts, north of the site, there's only, uh, an entrance onto Route nine south.
Right.
There's no access to Route nine north. So to go south, not many people will turn north onto Sheaf Road to go south onto Route nine. They'll go south onto Sheaf Road, go over to the light and continue south, or continue south on Sheaf Road.
Yeah, that's, that's generally what people do today, I'd say. It's not a lot of traffic going the other way, but gotta make sure it's safe to look at.
Exactly, so, and I think that with, um, by looking at the site distances with, uh, the town engineer to see what will, what will be required to demonstrate, um, we were showing two seventy again based on the ASHTO standard. Um, using the town standard, if that's what's gonna be applied, this, this, that's in the subdivision code, I think that we'll be able to meet the two seventy-five just by being able to take that measurement from a little closer to the road. So again, you gain a little bit of a, of sight there.
Okay.
So that covers the seeker with, um, with exception of the, the sewer. So the sewer, clearly there was, uh, an intention for the Forsens project when they designed their pump station to include the option for neighbors to tie in. They, they designed extra capacity based on anticipated usage for other properties. And I have a, um, a resolution from the town board from January of this year that outlines, um, how they have offered to construct additional mains from its pump station to its property lines to serve the four additional neighboring parcels, um, with the intent to convey the improvements, easements to the town. So clearly, there's, there's the intention to tie in these properties, our property included. The concern before was, well, what if that project doesn't happen? Since then, they've started to construct their force main, so everything is pointing towards that happening. So worst-case scenario is that they, they build to the approved pump station location and build that pump station at the location that it was approved, and our property would have to, uh, design and build a pump station from our property and discharge to that pump station. It makes more sense to relocate that approved pump station to a lower point to allow for the adjoining property owners to discharge to a central pump station without having to have numerous pump stations. That is what is being, uh, pursued right now by the Forsens, uh, engineering consultant, Poval Engineering. What we showed on our plans was the, uh, a technically, um, sound design for that relocation. It hasn't been submitted to the town yet, because the details and cost-sharing agreement still needs to be worked out between the adjoining property owners, which takes some time. But again, the worst-case scenario, if that were to fall through and it does not get relocated, we, we will just be designing and installing a pump station from our property to, uh, the Forsens site.
Does that include the, the option for the Porco property to, yeah, fit into there, okay.
So, so those are the, those were the seeker items. So what, what we submitted was what I believe, something that shows a viable design and viable concept for stormwater, water, and for sewer, as well as a site that conforms to zoning and, and/or, uh, shows the variance that we need. So that's, I, I've seen the, the recommendation for, uh, from the planning department to defer an action on seeker. The reason why I'm pressing the issue is just because of timing. We need to go to the, the zoning board and get variances for these existing conditions. The building is located, the existing building's located within setbacks, and they lost their grandfathering because it was vacant for more than twelve months. So we need to go back and get variances for those existing conditions. Just based on the submission deadlines and all of that, that's gonna put us back several months just, just to go to the zoning board. And if we, so obviously, time is of the essence, cause these guys were trying to get into this building for, I believe, Easter. So, um, so that's why I'm, I'm pressing the issue, and I wanted to hit those items, cause I really do believe that, um, they've been substantially addressed. It just, it's a kind of a unique situation, and it needs to be just kind of gone through verbally to, to hash out these details.
All right. Thanks for your presentation. I'll go to Eric and have him.
There are a couple other things I just wanted to address, if you don't mind. We do have, um, we submitted, I just wanted to show a version of the, uh, front facade with windows. So this was just a, a side-by-side comparison view, um, of showing with windows if we were to, uh, install them or currently just leave the building as it is now without any windows. Also, um, one of the items I'd like to, to address is, um, the screening of headlights in the rear parking area to, for the Casper Kill condominium property adjacent to us. This is an aerial image where you can see our building here, and if you can see this line in the tree, tree line here, that's the, that's the creek that runs in the rear of our property. So our property line is just along that tree line there that you see. So there is approximately three hundred and fifty feet before you get to the actual residences of, of wooded area. So we, we felt that that existing natural, um, landscape buffer was sufficient, and that you wouldn't see any of the headlights, and also the, um, masses are gonna be held on Sunday mornings, so there really aren't gonna be any, you know, the parking lot's not gonna be populated at night to have those, um, headlights shine in that direction.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Eric?
Sure. Well, I think Christian already kind of outlined the, the, yeah, the seeker issues that we had thought. Well, I think Christian already kind of outlined the seeker issues that we had thought still remained to be addressed, and so that'll be for the board to consider. But with thinking that those were still outstanding and needed to be addressed, because we didn't have any information to address them, some of it we just got, we were suggesting that this be deferred to October or November. I don't see any reason why we couldn't turn things around pretty quickly with the additional information, and I guess, I'd suggested to Christian that, I'm a little fuzzy myself on exactly what degree of legal sufficiency is necessary to demonstrate adequate sewer access and design for a seeker approval. So I'd suggest that we could get together Monday or Tuesday to work that out, or, I don't know if you want to address that now.
No, it's, honestly, I don't know the answer to the question as we sit here. I mean, obviously, you have, the location of the pump station will deal with whether there's other mitigating factors that need to be addressed, I think. But yeah, it's not something that, because I wasn't anticipating the, the option of doing that tonight, I didn't, it wasn't something I had looked at.
Bless you.
Bless you.
We'd also, I guess, the, my thinking prior to this was that, the information I got yesterday was that there's no, there's no agreements yet as to how to proceed with the design exactly, and who's gonna own, which facilities are gonna be located where under which ownership. And typically, for my understanding, and I'll defer to the engineer or the attorney on this, typically, if the town is gonna be, if a plan is proposed for sewer dedication, there's gonna need to be some understanding of who's gonna own it, who's gonna be, on whose property it's going to be, who's gonna be responsible for building, and then who's gonna be transferring it to the town, under what circumstances. And those seem to be, those seem to be all unclear as of yesterday.
And, and to be honest, the final details of that are still unclear. They still need to be worked out. So, if it is an issue of having something, a legal instrument in writing that is required to make a seeker determination, that was, that wasn't my understanding that that was required.
I don't think we need the instrument, I guess, and this is where I need to, we'll need some feedback on what's needed. I don't think we need the legal instrument, because we can do it condition, it just needs to be known how.
Whether it's gonna be on your property or not? I mean, that's kind of a big deal.
The intent is definitely to relocate the pump station where we show it on the plan, and again, that design was from Poval Engineering. Poval Engineering will be responsible for doing any redesign of that sewer pump station, including any new gravity main and force main. So, the way that I look at this is, for the sake of argument, assume that that system, the pump station easement's collection system, say that they're approved, it's an approved town system, or that will be dedicated to the town once it's built. For this application, the review would be limited to the service lateral from the building to that town system, or what will be a town system. So that's, that's how I would, I believe that it makes sense to separate this out. That's, the redesign is a separate issue that's gonna be handled, separate from this application, headed by Poval Engineering and Forsens, but in coordination with the adjacent property owners.
So Christian, in your, in your, what's been submitted so far, though, there is a, it's not maybe your preferred alternative or the most logical alternative, but there is a, an alternative currently shown with a pump station on your property that would pump up to the top of that.
That is, that is the preferred alternative. That's, that's what's being pursued right now and being discussed amongst the property owners.
Not the, he just said one, with the pump station on your property.
The new pump station located on, it's right on the property line of our property and the property to the south of us.
To the south, okay.
And that's the low, that's the, the local low point. So everybody, the Forsens site, our site, the property to the south of us, and then there's two, at least two properties across Sheaf Road that would discharge to gravity to this new central pump station that's now, that's trying to be redesigned to the local low point, so that there's only one pump station that will pump back up, up Sheaf Road and down Route 9 to the town manhole. And what's still left to be, my concern is if we're waiting on those agreements to be, to be worked out, there's still a design that needs to be reviewed and approved by the town, and there's a whole bunch of legal.
Like I said, I don't think we need the specific agreements, but just what I've seen in the past is that there needs to be, Don, did you wanna?
I'm gonna chime in. It would seem to me, I'm on the same wavelength as Mike, that if we want a seeker review here, we don't put a piece, we don't put a pump station on somebody else's property and do it without doing the seeker review on that pump station on that other person's property. If that's not being proposed, we ought to see a pump station on this property with a force main, and that should be the extent of our seeker review. If it, if it then has to change, you have to change your seeker later.
Right. So maybe that's the way to get, that's how to get, be the quickest way to get something done.
Yep. To, to show a private pump station from ours to the approved location?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause right now, right now, we have, on record, is it approved pump station location on the Forsens property. And so now, we have a pump station being shown on a third-party's property to the south from, who's not a signatory to this application.
Right.
Right. So it gets very convoluted that way.
Right.
So if you can show something that's viable, you know, that involves your own property and, and, you know, even if it's not the optimal solution.
Even the other option would be, you've said before, you could design a septic system. You show a septic system, seeker.
I'd rather you do the other.
Yeah. Sure. Or just show just the pump station.
Pump station on your property.
Just to, then get through the process a lot quicker, and then have all those details worked out later.
Yeah, if it changes, that's, that's not a problem. I mean, the Forsens site plan will likely change as well.
And it's obviously beneficial to have one pump station overall and to the whole area, but it sounds like it's gonna take some coordination.
That's just a matter of, just technical details.
Yeah.
So, it's, if we're talking seeker and just determining whether it's a viable solution, I can tell you right now that we can go back and do a pump station design to lift the sewage from our property to the other property. That's, that's, there's no issue with that. So I think the, the main concern was, do we need to have a septic system and can, is one viable? We now know that the pump station, the approved, a pump station is going to be built. They're, they're building the force main as we speak. So, that, I, it was my understanding that that was really the issue. We are go, the, the plan is to tie into town, the town sewer system. Whether the pump station is located at the low point and at this new location, or at the approved location on the Forsens property, I think is a moot point, because it's gonna be, it's, it's one pump station versus another. It's, 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 there's no reason for the design not to work.
Again, I'll defer, I'll defer to legal and engineering on whether the location of the hook into town sewer is important, because, I mean, if you're gonna run a, if you're gonna connect a town sewer 200 versus 2,000 feet, that's, those are two different circumstances. And if it's on private property versus town right-of-way, they're two different circumstances. So I think, does the, does the location of where they're gonna hook in matter?
Well, I think the overall concern I would have is that we won't have any plan showing anything if you approve seeker tonight. So we got, don't have a plan, shows anything.
Why don't we, for the October meeting, which is ideally, you know, it's, it's one month away, I realize, but it's not, it's, can we get a set of plans that, that shows a viable option, even if it's not the one that's ultimately gonna get built? And then we can base our seeker determination on that. Would that be doable?
When is the due date? Monday?
We can give you some extra days for that.
The alternative would be to have an agreement, at least in principle, with every, all the players as to where the pump station's actually going to be. I don't know that we need to have, you know, final signed agreements or anything like that, but if you're talking, we have a pump station that's probably going to be moved, so we can't do it on the basis of the existing pump station. I mean, you can show now pumping from your proposed pump station to the currently approved pump station, but if it got to the point where you had an alternate pump location that was going to be communal, we could do that also. But my sense is that you're not going to have that in time for the submittal for the next meeting.
Submittal for the next meeting is in two days.
I mean, the board, since this really is the only open issue, I'm sure the board would give you some additional time, but I'm, since the control of the moving of that pump station is out of your hands, since it's not your engineering, in order to move this forward more quickly, that designing the pump station would be the most, the quickest way, and then it would just be an amendment of the plans when the pump station moved to do the mains.
Yep, that, that sounds like a good approach.
And that way, the board wouldn't be voting on a seeker determination in a vacuum about, you know, what the sewer plans are. We would have an ability to look at it, say, yes, this will work, yes, we'll be able to connect to town sewer, and we can move forward then.
And maybe you'll get the letter from, from the.
From SHPO?
From SHPO as well, in the meantime, in the next.
But we, that may not even be necessary, but we.
Cover all.
We'll look at this. But I think that's, and we can give you a little extra time, because again, there's really not a lot of
Right.
anything else to look at and review, so it's, it's, it should be workable, I think, from.
It looks like you're locked and loaded, ready to go with architecture decisions and whatnot there, so. The windows you showed, those were false windows, or some of them were real?
Uh, no, they were, they were all gonna be real windows.
Oh, real windows, okay. Because there was a conference room there and some other things that could probably use some natural light.
Right.
Okay.
Do a public hearing?
Yep, that's what I was. This is a public hearing, so I move that we open the public hearing for this project.
Second.
Moved in second, called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this project tonight?
Thank you very much for the opportunity and for your support and the advice and recommendations that I hear you passing on, and thank you guys for that fantastic walkthrough. That really was very exciting for a lot of us to see for the first time. My name is Patrick Farley. I'm a resident in the town for the past 25 years. I'm here with my wife Teresa tonight. Teresa, you're, there you are. I own a small business in Wapinjers, and my wife is a schoolteacher, actually, at Sheaf Road for the past 21 years. Speaking of Valley Christian Church, we've been members, gosh, for right around 25 years. Starting to feel old right now, but it's been a tremendous blessing for us and for our family. I know we have a lot of friends from Valley. I thought maybe it'd be easier, and considered of your time, that they might feel less obligated to all speak, if I just had them kind of raise their hands and say hello. Not that I want to cut any of you off, but I, I know we can chat a lot. So, we're all here, obviously, in support of the project, and again, thank you for your time. I'm honored to serve as a trustee on the board at Valley for all this time, and I just want to testify, I guess publicly, for the positive impact that Valley's had on, on us and as a family, and I know will have on the Sheaf Road community. I know Valley to be a good steward of our own property and certainly great neighbors to those around us. It's our goal to make a positive contribution to all that we come in contact with, and certainly our new neighbors in the town. I think Pastor Greg has said it best, as he's led our congregation for, gosh, almost 30 years now. The church exists for the benefit of its non-members, and that really will be all our sole mission there. Would not be just front of mine, but literally be our mission to be good neighbors. So again, thank you for your support of this program. It's very, very exciting for us as we continue to grow in the town. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Is there anyone else which is to speak? Seeing done tonight, I move we adjourn the public hearing to October 17th, 2019.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. Let's go around the board for any additional comments. Bob?
No, neither.
Nicole?
No, not at this time.
Peter?
I said, I think the last time you were here, you couldn't have picked a better architect. I mean, really, so skilled and adaptive reuse. Every time they come in with a presentation similar to this, I'm always amazed at what a great job that you do. It takes, because, you know, it takes a lot of thought. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Ben?
All right, Sid.
Oh, just one other thing I wanted to say. There was, I wanted to address a comment that the town engineer made earlier. It's not easy being green.
And, you know, I see we had our wetlands consultant, and I'm glad you worked with, worked with that to, you know, do the extra protection of the wetlands with the stormwater. So that's good, that's my comment. And I think it is a great project. Appreciate all the members coming out to support and hanging in there this late. I think it's good to adaptively reuse an old building, and this is certainly a good use for it, it looks like. We'll just try to get you there as soon as we can with the seeker issues and move along.
We appreciate that, thank you.
So with that.
I move that the planning board determine that the action is incomplete for a seeker determination, and the planning board defer action on this application pending a revised submittal subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning department and those received from town departments and agencies, and set responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness included but not limited to the following 1 through 13.
That's it. Moved in seconded to defer, called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. Hope to see you back here soon in October and move forward with that seeker.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Project 9, Haifa Holdings on 819 Main Street. I move that we adjourn the public hearing to October 17th, 2019.
Second.
Moved in second, called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Bramin Aveville School, property redevelopment, site plan public hearing. I move we adjourn the public, the site plan public hearing to October 17th, 2019.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. In 11, Stewart Shop, 6 Manchester Circle. I move we adjourn the public hearing to October 17th, 2019.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. Quick note, at this time, I'll ask for, I'll make a motion that we allow public comment and any other items on tonight's agenda, and please limit comments to no more than three minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. Is there anyone in the audience wish to comment on any other remaining agenda items? Seeing done, I move we resume the meeting.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. Moving right along, to Mazda expansion on that 2309 Route 9. It's an unlisted action. Welcome back and.
Thank you.
Give me, give your updates since the last meeting.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Christopher Lapina with the Jason Companies.
Chuck Havleski, General Manager, Route 9 Mazda.
We were before the planning board for the Mazda project in July, and at which time we received a comprehensive set of comments from the town offices and the consulting engineer. We also received some very solid feedback as it related, from the planning board, as it related to ways in which we can improve and enhance the site plans that we had before you that evening. We took your advice and recommendations, and we met with both the architect and the client, shared with them the feedback that was solicited, and we made a number of modifications to our plan, which we hope satisfied the board in terms of their comments they made. I'd like to briefly go through those with you, and I'll highlight those, recognizing how late you've been here this evening.
As, as well you.
The one comment that was made was the ability to retain the existing face of the building along the north side of the existing building here. We met with the architect on that. There was a proposal to expand that approximately seven feet. We've since reduced that, and we've kept the existing building wall along the north side. We've since reduced that and we've kept the existing building wall along the north side of the project. What we've done now is with this additional area here, we've backfilled it with approximately 130 shrubs in this area to kind of break up the impervious between the wall and the, I'm sorry, the building wall and the adjoining Anthony Drive. We were asked to revisit and improve how we can relocate the parking in the rear of the building that abuts Country Club Apartments. We were able to shift that outside of the 40-foot setback line. We then added some additional landscaping and the fencing along that aisle in the rear as well. And while we're focusing on this, if you recall, we previously had the refuse enclosure area located here at the board's direction. We relocated the refuse area right here, adjoining it, next to it, we felt it would work out really well. We put the tire storage area. It's an enclosed structure similar to the refuse enclosure. And we would like to note, and Eric pointed out to me that we did not indicate, but I want to put it on the record for the board, that all the used oil and batteries will be stored internally to the building. They will not be stored outside.
Okay, that's somewhat typical.
There was a request that we extend the sidewalk from the right-of-way into our site, which we have done here. We've made a bit of a switchback and the reason why is because we wanted to make that a handicap accessible sidewalk. So we were working with the steep topography. And then we've incorporated a stamped, stamped pavement that walks right into our building with that. Let's see here. Refuge enclosure, okay. The other thing I wanted to point out here is we were asked to revisit the landscaping within the infiltration basins for this project area. We incorporated a series of river birch and some red maples in here, as well as a linden tree as well. We threw in some pockets of shrubs as well along the side slopes. And what we did was, in addition to the areas that we didn't backfill on the side slopes with shrubs or trees, we called out a wildflower mixture, a short growing wildflower mixture for the side slopes. And then we have a higher growing wildflower mixture that we've proposed in the base of our infiltration facilities. We took a little bit more liberty in expanding the landscaping within the forebay that we had in the circular parking area in the front of the, of the facility adjoining Route 9. And so there's two other things I wanted to point out and Eric brought to my attention. It didn't show up clearly in our submittal as I took a look at what was submitted. And I just want to turn the board for a second. There was a discussion at the meeting about the possibility of putting a number of lights on timers so that in the evening they would shut off and decrease the overall illumination of the site. What I learned after receiving the comments on Monday is this circular layer here that I'm showing around all these lights, the intent of that was to identify all these lights that'll be on a timer that would shut down at 9:00 PM in the evening. They would be on a motion sensor in the event that if there was some activity taking place, it would brighten up the area beneath it. So I apologize that this was somehow turned off on what was submitted, but this was the intent in response to the comments we received from the planning board and we took this to Mazda as well for their approval. We were also asked to meet with the adjoining property owner, Country Club Apartments, to discuss the improvements being proposed adjoining to their property in the rear. Also discuss the opportunity for incorporating landscaping adjacent to Anthony Drive where they currently have parking and the relocation of the westernmost access point. I know that's a, a item that's also been brought out not only by the offices of the planning department, but also by the fire department. We've spent the last two months trying to orchestrate a meeting. I'm happy to say that we have a meeting tomorrow morning to discuss, to go, to review with them our proposal for mitigating this area in the back where some clearing and gravel has occurred, but also discuss with them the opportunity now that we're fully utilizing our entire site for circulation, that in the restoration of this, if we can incorporate some landscaping as requested by the planning board, and also the opportunity to relocate the westernmost entryway to line up with the back.
Yeah, that would be great. If that can be accomplished.
Yeah, that deal is done and is verbally done, but tomorrow we can, we can kind of put it together.
Glad to hear that's moving forward too.
And the other, only other change that didn't come up as a part of the planning board review, but as the project has evolved with Mazda as well was part of their new design that's recently come about is the ability for service cars instead of turning internally. The intent is to have a wall between where the cars enter in and the clientele enters in that'll break up the service area. These cars now will provide for more stacking in here and service cars will then be taken by technicians and routed around and in the back entryway. Previously, it was intended that they would come internal to the building. When we took a look at that, we looked that we were only going to be stacking up to four cars internally. This gives us the opportunity to stack up to five cars on each side or a total of 10 cars within the building. So that kind of highlights the, what I thought were the focal points of the last meeting and I leave it up to the board to receive any other input for improving this design.
Sounds like good improvements all around. Eric?
Thank you, Chris. That was, that was helpful. The staff recommendation was to adopt a seeker resolution for a negative declaration and provide a positive recommendation to the town board. Their next step would be to go pursue the rezoning with the town board, after which they would return to the planning board to complete site plan review. There's a number of comments, some of which Chris has addressed, that could be addressed in a next submittal for site plan review. One, couple of items I had identified for board consideration, one was that there's a 30-foot setback. I had noted previously, the board has typically sought to minimize use of the required buffer for motor vehicle display. The board has, has done that at several other places in town. In this particular instance, the board can discuss with the applicant or amongst yourselves, there is encroachment in the front landscape buffer on Route 9, but they're also improving the landscape buffer dramatically over what it is as an existing condition, going from about a one-foot buffer to like 20, I think I can't remember the number, 30.
Up to 30-foot buffer now.
Yeah, so, so there, even though they have some parking in the buffer, it's substantially less than the, than the existing today. There's another location at the northwest corner of the site where it's encroaching on landscape buffer, but in that case, it's, it's adjacent to vacant property. So we're just suggesting that they, to the maximum extent practicable, they provide landscaping from the roadway to accomplish the intent of that buffer, if you're comfortable with that. Chris, did you get a chance to look at the board last time? I'd asked about crosswalks along Route 9 and possibly across Anthony Drive?
So we've, we've delineated a crosswalk on our plan right now. We are working with the DOT to discuss the slope issues within that area.
Great. And that goes right to that bus stop right on the other side there.
Correct. One thing I do want to point out is our parking's not within the landscape buffer. It's within the front yard setback in the district.
Okay, correct. And then did, we talked this afternoon also, we had thought that the easternmost curb cut on Anthony Drive is uncomfortably close to the intersection for any left turns in or out. So I was, so it's, it's not in the recommendation, but we had asked that you also look into the possibility of perhaps making that a right-in, right-out.
So I spoke to the ownership team this evening. They're amenable to doing that, making that a right-in, right-out as requested. And what we can do is, I thought, is we can extend a dialogue tomorrow with the party about perhaps putting a small pork chop in there so that we can direct rights in, rights out and give us the ability to expand that opening that's currently limited to 20 feet in their easement, but allow us to expand it maybe up to 26 feet so that we can design it accordingly.
That'd be great. Thank you. Thank you. And then lastly, just a heads up to you and to the board, you don't yet have a recommendation from the county department of planning. They didn't get that letter out today, but they indicated that they have some, they have a high degree of concern about the high lighting levels close to Route 9. And so that's likely to be the comment that they'll be submitting. And so you may want to take a look at that for when they return for site plan review and the board may want to discuss that as well.
So we've, since we received your comments on Monday, it's, it's been an iterative process that we're working with in terms of trying to balance lighting illuminations versus a corporate standard. We've been able to reduce from their previous application their corporate standard by 50% for the illumination. And people are looking at me with big eyeballs sticking out because, you know, we're anywhere from 10 to 15-foot candles there, but, you know, their, their standard's 30-foot candles in their parking lot. So we had a back and forth dialogue previously. We've already started planting the seed that we're going to have to have that dialogue again. And we are, what we told them is next week, we'd start giving them an idea of something that's, you know, we're working with the lighting consultant to come up with a new, a new plan right now, but to see if there's something that they could digest.
I don't even think an ATM has lit to that high of a standard, so.
Understood. We're trying to, obviously, we're trying to do a balancing act with the community, corporate, and it's, I think we'll find a compromise.
I did take a look at, I took a quick look at, at two of the other plans that the board had approved with vehicle storage at dealerships for lighting. And one of them, one of them, the lot was illuminated in the vicinity of 10 to 12-foot candles and the other one was generally around 15, although along Route 9, along the Route 9 portion, the lighting was somewhat higher.
All right. Keep looking at that. Anything else, Eric?
That's all.
Any engineering concerns on?
We're still working through some issues on the SWIP, which is the biggest issue, but other than that, not a lot.
All right, thanks. Let's go around the board for comment. Start with Ben this time.
Yes, sir.
Peter?
Glad to see you filled in the landscaping. Looks much better.
Thank you.
Number one, number two, this question of, I don't recall the crosswalk across Route 9.
That's got to be a huge expense. I mean, where did that, where did that come from?
DOT.
Was it DOT suggestion?
Across Anthony Drive, we're putting the crosswalk.
But, but not across Route 9?
Not across Route 9.
I thought someone mentioned Route 9. Does it have to be a signalized crosswalk?
Yes, and this one has to be a signalized pedestrian crossing. And we're working with the DOT because it's not a standard signalized pedestrian crossing. I believe there's an individual who's visibly impaired in this area and we have to have a special type of pedestrian signal for him along with the special type of crosswalk.
That's the one that beeps and...
So that's what I was talking about earlier with the existing slopes there where, because we have, they have signal cables within the existing pavement there. So if you're going to start regrading that, then you're removing all the detector loops that are in there as well for the signal, so.
Yeah, you're coming down a fairly steep hill there to the light.
It, it's fairly steep and then, you know, what the DOT has their new requirements of one and a half percent, but their existing facilities don't meet their requirements. And so it's a balance and act because at the same time, we would have to do a significant amount of regrading along Anthony Drive to conform to their requirements there as well. So, well, significant in terms of, you know, maybe about 40 to 50 feet, so.
Anything else, Peter? Nicole?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
And Bob?
Nothing for me.
I guess my only comment is the sidewalk that the DOT wants along Route 9 and their right-of-way have a buffer to Route 9 or?
Yes, we have a, a buffer to Route 9 to allow for snow storage along there.
Okay, about a five-foot or something or?
Yes, we're within that area.
It's hard to see on the time.
The other thing, the other thing we're trying to work out, and maybe we can get some direction from the board on here, is there's an existing access easement to the south of our project. And I'm assuming we should be extending the sidewalk past that.
That was my next comment.
So.
Because I think they're going to provide some, some crosswalk connection
Okay.
To that piece of sidewalk, so we want that to meet up.
So, so we should then do the crosswalk here and then add another stub of sidewalk so that they can connect to it is, is kind of the direction because we, we have a submittal that's hopefully going into the DOT tomorrow or Monday. And I just want to incorporate that.
Yeah, they're planning to do some pavement marking to connect into their building from there. I guess they're working out a plan as well. So that would have to be a, you know, not a curb, but a...
We're going to have to have a ramp, yeah, ramp on each side and then we'll...
Exactly. Just on that.
Okay.
Come down, come down to meet up with their, with their plans. I guess that's all I had. Looking good. A lot of great improvement.
Thank you.
Glad to see you're redoing that, that entrance way as well. Go ahead.
I move that the planning board determine that the proposed Mazda expansion 2309 Route 9 project would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in seeker negative declaration for an unlisted action dated September 19th, 2019.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero.
I move that the planning board convey a positive recommendation to the town board regarding adoption of the proposed zoning map amendment to rezone a plus or minus 5.91 acre portion of parcel 6160-03-100001 from the resident multifamily RM district to the highway business BH district.
Moved in seconded for a positive recommendation, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero.
I move that the planning board defer action on the application pending a revised submittal subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies. Set responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness included but not limited to the following 1 through 11.
And do we need to add comments about the sidewalk extension or whatever that's covered?
I'll add it as well.
All right. Do I have a second? Okay, moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero.
Thank you very much and we continue to look forward to working with you.
Thanks again and...
Thank you.
Onto the town board for rezoning.
Fingers crossed.
Next up, Siago, Siago, shanter lot line revision. Regarding a proposal to convey 0.043 acre portion of Three River Road to Four Main Street in New Hamburg. Type 2 action. Welcome. Thanks for hanging in there.
Good.
We had a bad, a long meeting tonight. So I think you had a revision of before and this is an additional... It is. ...conveyance?
Could you just move the microphone over?
Sure. So introduce yourself.
I had so much fun the last time. I thought I'd do another one.
Do I have to say something? Sure. Yeah, briefly say, you know...
Oh, okay. Ahmed Siago, my neighbor and I are proposing another lot line revision, particularly for the purpose of just squaring off my property a bit more and getting some more property for my kids to run on. And she hasn't, she's always wanted to, to clear the property and make it look pretty, but she's just never got around to it. And as she's gotten older, she...
pretty, but she's just never gotten around to it, and as she's gotten older, she, we kind of work together on, on making this, this property that we share, and this property line that we share, look, look nice. So, it's helpful for her to, to have, to have the extra resources, you know, it's for her retirement, and, and, and we like to help her in that way, and also to make the property look nice. So we both benefit when we do this, so this is probably the last one I'll do with her. And that's basically the intent of it. I worked all summer clearing this property, so my, my elbows are still stiff, and my, my pinkies don't, don't turn anymore very normally, but anyway.
Fun landscaping work.
Oh, yeah. Cut me a shape. But it's, you know, so, we, we finally got, got around to doing all the paperwork together, and anyway, just submitting for your approval, and if there's anything that I need to provide, I'll, I'll do so.
Yeah, I've noticed all the improvements on the, the back of your parcel there when I, when I ever passed them by that way, so it's great.
Yeah.
And Marjorie's a nice person, so glad you're.
Sorry?
Marjorie's a nice, nice woman.
Oh, yeah.
Glad you're working, working with her to get this done.
Yeah.
Eric, anything, recommendation?
You have a resolution to approve the application in a couple of steps.
Sounds good.
Getting late.
Never heard you be that. No engineering issues, I believe? Any comments from the Board? Bob?
No.
No? Ben?
Peter? I just want to be certain, we're not creating an inconforming lot by the transit.
As far as taking away from hers, what's this, what's the remaining size then?
I believe all the setbacks presented, the proposed setbacks would all be conforming.
I'm thinking not about the setbacks, but about the square footage.
They're conforming.
Good, okay.
Yeah, they both look like fairly large. All right, and we're good to go.
I move that the Planning Board determine that the proposed activity is consistent with the town of Poughkeepsie's approved local waterfront revitalization program, because it will be conducted in a manner consistent with such a program.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
I move that the Planning Board grant conditional lot land revision approval, and also grant a 60-day time extension of said approval from November 18, 2019, forward to January 17, 2020, subject to the following: Respond in writing to comments of the Planning Board and those received from the town departments and agencies. Said responses to be reviewed by the Planning Department as to adequacy and completeness and inclusive of the following 1 through 8.
Second. Moved and seconded for conditional, called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. You're good to go.
All right, thank you.
Good luck, hope your hands heal up.
Oh, yeah, they are, because I'm finally done. Thanks.
Just a reminder, there will be a couple, a correction map to.
Sorry?
There'll need to be a couple of minor changes to the map.
Oh, sure.
Follow-up on, get it signed, so the Board approval is conditional.
Okay.
You still have to make those changes and give it to us so it can get signed.
Yep, got it. Okay, thank you.
I'm going to say goodnight to the Board.
Yep.
See you next month.
Thanks for hanging in there, Lee Sin, and your comments tonight. All right, next up, architectural review for Hudson Heritage Shoprite. Come on down.
Maybe Carol.
Yeah, you guys want to look at?
Pass it around.
Pass it around, and I'll take it back. So, my name is Susan Stassoon with Rosenbaum Design Group, and I'm here to present the Shoprite at Hudson Heritage.
If you want to stand, that's fine. If you want to maybe grab the microphone that's about there, turn it on and give it like two seconds, and then it's for the audience at home.
Can everybody hear me out there?
Not sure.
All right. That's why I said at home.
So, I understand you've already seen the elevation, and we've responded to some comments. This is the first time I think you're seeing, seeing it with signage, and I've brought material samples so that you can see how they match up to the actual, to the materials on the board, so I can bring those around. So, we maintain the same color scheme as the rest of the property. This is the brick that we're proposing for the columns and the bulkheads, and then the rest of the building will be CMU in the front. This is the CMU material. Matches up nicely with the brick. These are samples of the siding.
Hardyboard.
It's similar to Hardyboard, it's a different brand.
Different brand, but the same thing.
And then this is the, this is the precast concrete that's going to go around the, the back and the sides of the building. And this doesn't show the scoring on it, but it's going to be scored, so it'll look like the CMU. Do you have any questions for me?
Chime in, everybody. I have, I have one, of course, and we're always seeing the 2D version here, but it's a three-dimensional building too, and the apartments are going to be overlooking this, and people coming down from the hill, so I don't see a representation of what the HVAC is or where it is.
I brought a roof plan with me.
How that may or may be screened to look.
Does it have enough for you, or you can point? Sure. So this, there's going to be one large HVAC unit here, and that's going to be pretty much centered in the space, and then there'll be some small units here, here, and then up front. These, the ones up, they're pretty much going to be completely obscured from, from the front parking lot area. You can't see anything because you'll have all these.
Carol, could you hold that up a little higher, please?
The front parapet and all will hide pretty much everything. In the back, I also, I brought a section, let me show you on the, on the next page.
As you, as you show us, could you just identify which is the front?
It was facing.
In, in the section, the front is over here and here, and the roof is down about four feet or so, and then it slopes down even lower towards the back. The HVAC units will be back here and here, so if you're looking at it on the roof, these condensers, these are very low, those are the refrigeration condensers, so this, this will be the tallest item, and it's pretty central in the roof, so it won't be too visible from, from the sides or from the front. From the back, you'd have to be pretty far back and pretty high up in order to see any of this.
Well, the residents are going to be high up, and we, our code, our, our town code requires that all HVAC, all roof-mounted HVAC be properly screened.
Okay, what kind of screening would you like? Do you want the screening to be on our building, or with landscaping?
You're the architect, I mean, there's some people use a parapet wall.
Well, we have, we have, we have parapets across the front and the two sides, but the roof slopes towards the back, so we've got a gutter along the back, and it's similar to the Home Depot that's right next door. So I, I took a look to see if you could see the back of the Home Depot from any, anywhere, and I couldn't see it, so I think that our building will be similarly screened, you know, with the landscaping that's, that's there, but if you, if you want us to put something additional.
Yes.
You know, let us know what, what it is that you want.
Yeah, I guess the concern is, you know, for the residents in those, those apartments, as well as, you know, people driving down the, up and down the road there to the hotel, what, what is their view shed going to be, so.
What I've seen on two instances in the last two years, I think, was where there was an issue with screening, one of them had to be installed post-construction. They used some kind of metal screening in the immediate vicinity of the units, so, because that was built, that building either didn't have a parapet, or the parapet wasn't sufficient, and the screening in proximate to the units was effective, you know, the distance to the edge of the building didn't matter. So if, if this design can accommodate it, then that might be an effective strategy.
Right.
There's a location here, you know, there's.
So it just dresses it up, dresses it up a bit for, from a visual perspective to have the, I mean, you could look online, there's, there's various types of screening like that, as Eric mentioned, but.
We've, we've done them on other buildings, we've put some screening right around each unit, and we've seen that.
I think we're looking for that.
Okay, sure.
Anyone else have any comments on architecture?
No.
Overall, I mean.
Would it be okay for the screenings, when they come back with it, to be reviewed by staff and perhaps, just so that we can?
Sure.
Yes. They, they wait quite a long time to.
Yeah, that way they don't have to come back. Make that, make that a conditional, yeah.
Okay. I move that the Planning Board certify that the proposed architecture for Shoprite Building at Hudson Heritage is consistent with the design guidelines Phase 1 dated April 29, 2019, that the Planning Board accepts the renderings and samples presented by, presented for architectural review, subject to the following 1 through?
2.
2? Do we want to put 3 for?
2 is the HVAC.
Okay, and 2.
And you could just, I just, in my notes, I modified 2 to say that that's a submittal subject to review by staff and chairman.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, moved and seconded, called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for hanging in there, and Carol, do you need those?
Forward?
Materials?
Eric, do you want the materials?
You're going to just take that? All right. We're getting more efficient.
Eric's got a house to build sometime.
You're aware of, and Shoprite's aware of the plastic bag bin coming, right? Some of these stores have just put in those rounders. Now they got to take them out again. All right, next up, couple of time extensions on Planet Wings at 661 Dutcher's Turnpike. I move that the Planning Board grant 2 90-day time extensions of the site plan completion date required by Section 210-151 Sub-J from September 14, 2019, forward to March 11, 2020, noting that no further time extensions are available.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. I move that for Horizon Store additional retail expansion at 661 Dutcher's Turnpike. I move that the Planning Board grant 2 90-day time extensions of conditional site plan approval from October 18, 2019, forward to April 22, 2020, noting that no further time extensions are available.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
I move that we end tonight's meeting.
Anybody want a second?
Terminate.
Second, terminate. Moved and seconded, to terminate tonight's meeting, called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No opposition? Motion passes five to zero.